County Commissioners Meeting. We're grateful to have the opportunity to assemble this morning and for your attendance and participation. We typically like to start our meetings with a reading, thought, or prayer along with the Pledge of Allegiance and look to our audience for those who might be willing to volunteer to participate with us in that. Is there anyone who would be willing to offer a reading, thought, or prayer? Or lead us into pledge, yes. Prayer? Would someone be willing to lead us into pledge? If you'll just come to the podium and please state your name.
Cody La. Where we'd meet you. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here this day. We're grateful for the land that we live in and the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for our rights and responsibilities and that we can serve. We pray for thy Spirit and that we can listen and discuss the needs of the county and that thy Spirit will guide us to do thy will. We're grateful for all the blessings that we enjoy and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and follow after me, Springkinton. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you to those who participated with us in that. We will now go through the process of continuing to build our agenda. All items will be moved to consent unless they are held for discussion and further review. We currently have fourteen items on consent. Of those fourteen items, I have had a request to strike Consent Agenda Items Number Two and Three for some clarification purposes to be brought back at a future date. Were there any additional items on consent that needed help?
If we could also strike number fourteen, there's no documentation with that.
Alright, so we will have Items Two, Three, and Fourteen from Consent to be stricken. Moving to the regular agenda, I had Regular Agenda Items Number Five.
If we could on Number Five table that without date. I've had some more conversations over the weekend I need to follow up with if we could do that, I'd appreciate it.
Granger, are you good with that?
Well, so, I would refuse, I would like to not table it. Last week I asked for a continuation for a week and we allowed comment because people showed up. I think we ought to do the same thing. We had people show up for public comments, so I'm okay with tabling it without date, but taking public comment.
Of course, they have comment on the end, you bet.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we will hold that for discussion and comment with that anticipation. We, I've got Regular Agenda Item Number Six for discussion. Regular Agenda Item Number Seven for discussion. Number Nine, a note on Number Ten, there wasn't a budget code listed, I have that code.
And I have it too, so we're okay.
Nine is held?
Yes, he said nine.
That's fire prevention, yes, nine. And then Ten, that was missing the code, but we've obtained that, so unless you have questions on it, that's been taken care of. Any additional items for regular agenda?
I don't mind leaving Number Eleven on consent if we will change the signature lines to be appropriate.
Good catch, we can do that? Alright. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and move into our regular agenda, which will begin with Regular Agenda Item Number Five. This item has been held from last week. It's to discuss the adoption of a resolution establishing Utah County Prosecutor Review Board. We'll go ahead and-
I'd like to start just for clarification on that. Over the weekend, I have had a lot of conversations, well, a lot, I've had some conversations with former judges, with the United States Senator, and others, law enforcement, besides others. And the reason why I'd like to table it is because I love this process. I love the fact that Jeff has his proposal up here as well and we can talk about it and go down through it. But there are some opportunities there. There was a suggestion to talk with the Supreme Court Justice in our state, which I would like to do as well as we look down through this process. And so that's the reason why I would like to table it for further discussion. And I can't, we can't just do one week because to get with some of these people is not that easy. It's going to take a little bit of time. And so that's the reason why, and again, I like where we're at, I like the fact that we have conversation. Obviously Jeff's got a proposal on there and sees the need for, you know, a review. And so that's the reason why I'd like to see it tabled.
Thanks. Jeff, we'll go ahead and turn some time to you.
Thank you, and I would ask the Commission to indulge me with a little more time than normal.
Absolutely, it's a big issue.
Pretty strongly about. And I will address most of my comments to the proposal that was on last week. I was not able to attend because of some family medical issues. But there were some strong words spoken by people in support of the proposal that was on the agenda last week. And I want to address that primarily. As Commissioner Lee mentioned, I made a proposal to Commissioner Ivy based upon discussions that we, the Commission and I had for a number of months, I believe starting last summer. I think we started discussing this idea of a way to support and strengthen my office as we make the tough decisions that we do as Ministers of Justice for Utah County. I told you for a number of years, I've been looking at doing something similar to this. There are a number of police agencies that use Commissions to help them as they do use for force reviews and other things like that. Now, they're a little different than we are because I'm publicly elected and it's a constitutionally mandated office. But I said I thought there was value in looking at a Commission. And I proposed a way that I thought it could be done lawfully and in a way that would help my office make tough decisions. And we called that the Prosecution Review and Advisory Commission. And as written, after much debate between us, we kind of ended up with a proposal that's on the agenda today. I don't think either myself or you fully liked the language in it, but I think it was a pretty good compromise between what you wanted and what I wanted. And I would support the passage of the one that's currently on the agenda that we worked together to create. But let me turn to the other one that was talked about in great length last week. And I will admit some of my comments are pretty pointed and I make these with all due respect to the Commission. I recognize that we have differing opinions and we have different viewpoints of how the law and even the Constitution should be interpreted. But the way I view the one that was on the Commission last week is that it's a direct attack on the prosecutors of Utah County Attorney's Office. And to a certain extent, on the police departments that investigate and prepare cases, the ones that we file. I believe it is unconstitutional that it, that we have a system set up where we have publicly elected prosecutors that answer to the electorate and to the courts, but not to the County Commission. I believe that proposal creates mistrust among our county citizens and the County Attorney's Office when none such mistrust exists except with a very small minority. And I'll admit, a very vocal minority. I think we should call it what it is. It's a proposal or a push by a group of anti-government, anti-law enforcement, anti-prosecution, anti-public safety people that want to control or influence the decisions of publicly elected prosecutors, when and how and whether to prosecute. And that decision should never, in my opinion, it should never be influenced by a publicly created body other than the courts, the county attorney, and in part maybe the bar association. It should be only influenced, that decision to prosecute should be influenced by the facts and the law and nothing else. So specifically turning to the proposal, let me address a few things. In the third whereas, it says allegations have been made to the Commission regarding past prosecutorial misconduct. First, let me say that allegations of misconduct exist against pretty much all elected officials, city, state, county, federal, whatever they may be. And in my role as the County Attorney, I am in fact charged with investigating and prosecuting some of those allegations. Some we have investigated, many we haven't because they are completely baseless. Part of what we do as elected officials is make tough decisions. Decisions that make some people mad and some people happy. But we don't create bureaucracy or we don't change the system merely because of an allegation. We investigate and we find the truth and then we take action. And I would ask if we've done that here. Many months ago, the Commission brought specific cases to us where, I assume you'd received requests from people saying, hey, look at this case, there's been a problem. We opened our files to you. We showed you everything that we could with the limited time that you had, what had happened in those cases. Did the Commission find misconduct? No, because there was not any. And we acknowledge that we're not perfect. We've had cases where witnesses lied to us. We've had mistakes gathering evidence, documenting evidence. We've made wrong legal arguments. But none of the cases the Commissioners mentioned to us had any misconduct whatsoever. In the fourth whereas, it says that Utah County must pay through taxes for alleged misconduct. And that is not correct. We do not pay for alleged misconduct. We might have to pay if misconduct was actually found and it affected someone's constitutional rights. But we don't give away taxpayer monies based upon allegations. In court, as you well know, allegations are thrown around sometimes with little or no basis in law or fact. But Utah County has never, and let me caveat that, at least during my eleven-plus years as a County Attorney and in the sixteen years of my predecessor, I'm unaware of any case where we've ever paid out taxpayer dollars for prosecutor misconduct. That's twenty-eight years without ever paying out money. And in those twenty-eight years, we've never had a case overturned for misconduct, zero cases. To my knowledge, we've never had the Innocence Project or the ACLU question one of our convictions. So where is this misconduct? It doesn't exist. Mistakes, sure. Misconduct, no. In the fifth whereas, it says that wrongful prosecutions, misconduct, et cetera, causes lasting and significant damage to the lives of victims and their families. That is true. If a case is overturned on appeal or mistrials declared because of misconduct, then a victim might have to endure another trial or they may never obtain justice. But again, in my eleven-plus years as County Attorney and in the sixteen years of my predecessor, we've never had a case overturned for misconduct. And we've never been found to have done any type of wrongful prosecution. In the sixth whereas, it says that prosecutorial immunity can create obstacles and barriers for victims to obtain justice. In my view, that is the exact opposite of the truth. Prosecutorial immunity supports victims as they seek to obtain justice. As the US Supreme Court has mentioned many times, without immunity, prosecutors and police officers will be timid. They will not be willing to put their livelihood, their homes, their financial security and reputations on the line anytime they have a tough case to handle, or even many of the easy ones. Why would a prosecutor file a domestic violence case unless he or she has a guarantee the victim's going to appear at trial? Why would we file a case like a drug dealer case unless we are a hundred percent sure the judge would rule with us on issues of search and seizure? Why don't we file a case against a politician if we thought that he or she might allege misconduct against us? Which of course, in every case where we do a prosecution against a political figure, they always allege misconduct against us. This desire to reduce prosecutor immunity is a desire to elevate the rights of perpetrators above those of the victims and the rights of our community to be safe from crime. The issue of prosecutorial immunity is an issue for the legislature. And I would submit this Commission should not engage in that, that would be a state legislature issue. Let me know that throughout the proposal, it seems like there is a misunderstanding. It seems to be calling perpetrators or defendants victims. But the Utah Code is clear that a victim is a person against a crime, a person against whom a crime has allegedly been committed. I disagree strongly when we call someone who has perpetrated a crime or even been a defendant and even maybe acquitted now a victim. They are not the victim. I think that idea that people that have been charged with and maybe acquitted of a crime or maybe convicted at some point and had the case overturned is that it's derived from the notion that prosecutors should win every case. That if we lose a case, that somehow that is misconduct, and that is not true. Persons charged with crimes in Utah and in the United States have the highest protections afforded by law, rightfully so. And we support that. They have the presumption of innocence, the right to counsel, and if they can't afford it, paid for by our tax dollars. They have a myriad of procedural rights, including the right to be found guilty only if the evidence is proved beyond a reasonable doubt. If there's any issue along the way, then the state loses the case. But that does not make that defendant a crime victim. I define someone a crime victim as someone like Michelle McNeil, who was murdered by her husband. Or the Ride family, whose husband was killed in the line of duty. Or a retired couple, whose financial savings and security were stolen by someone because of an affinity fraud. Or a many sexual abuse victims, those are the victims of crime. And I would submit that if we want, if this Commissioner wants to spend more tax dollars to help people accused of crimes, there are many ways that we can do that that are very beneficial. We can help restore the financial security of that couple that lost their life savings. We can provide more counseling services to people with substance abuse issues, in domestic violence cases, with people with mental illnesses. We can create a pre-trial services program to help those that have been arrested, something that we've been discussing for many, many months. We can provide more resources for the public defender's office. They, along with us, are the ones charged primarily to protect people's rights. These are a number of areas that the Commission can work in to provide more resources to help persons charged with crimes. At the County Attorney's Office, we've created, helped create two drug courts, two drug court alternative programs, a mental health court, a veterans' court. We're working with the Commission now to create a domestic violence court. These are areas where we can really, really effectively help people that are charged with crimes. And I would ask the Commission to put resources there. So let me turn now your attention to Number Three in the section, the "therefore's." It cites Utah Code Section seventeen fifty-three one oh six to justify the creation of this entity. To the contrary, I believe that Code section specifically prohibits taking this action. In that Code section, it says the county legislative body may not direct or supervise other elected county officers or their sworn deputies with respect to the performance of the professional duties of the officers or deputies. And then it says, a county elected officer's functions, duties, and responsibilities specifically provided for by law include the exercise of professional judgment and discretion reasonably related to the officer's required functions, duties, and responsibilities. And those functions, duties, and responsibilities are provided for the County Attorney's Office in Utah Code's article, oh, sorry, in the Utah Constitution, in Article Eight, Section Sixteen, as well as in Utah Code, Section Seventeen, eighteen A, four oh one, where it talks in great depth about the prosecution function and the authority that I have as the elected County Attorney, which includes all prosecutions for public offenses committed within a county and all prosecutions of criminal ordinances. Nowhere in the Constitution or the Utah Code does it provide the County Commission with oversight of the prosecution function or prosecutor's decisions. Establishing this board in the manner that was proposed last week is an increase in government bureaucracy. It creates another layer in an area where there are already more checks and balances than probably anywhere else in government, maybe the exception of nuclear weapons, I don't know. We have, not only do we have the defense bar questioning every decision we make, we have the courts at the trial level and the appeal courts, and we have the state bar. Every decision we make is reviewed multiple times by multiple entities. So let me take this further. This Commission, as proposed last week, creates a constitutional crisis, in my view. For instance, if this board were to issue a subpoena to my office for information that we believe should be protected, and we would challenge that in court, that's our job to do. Who would then represent the Commission against the County Attorney's Office when we are the only authorized counsel for the County Commission? So what if the board wants information about a crime victim? Or they want a CJC interview? Or they want to see evidence that the trial court won't even let the jury see? What happens then? We'll have this Commission, created by the County Commission, pitted against the County Attorney's Office in court on opposite sides. That is a constitutional crisis we don't need to engage in. So what if this Commission created by the Commission, I don't recall, the Review Commission, decides that we made a mistake? Let's say that even if when the courts say the County Attorney's Office did not make a mistake, but someone complains and this new Commission says, yeah, okay, County Attorney, you now made a mistake. That will create liability for Utah County. It will be used against us in litigation. So even when the courts may have said we made no errors, if this Commission said we did, then that would be used against us in court and create liability where none exists. Now, it's easy to argue that that's an unlikely scenario. And I will use a ridiculous example to show to you that, in my view, it is possible. You look at a case like the OJ Simpson trial. Everybody knows that OJ was guilty, and let's just be honest, OJ was guilty. Nonetheless, throughout that trial, his counsel made numerous accusations, not only against the police, but against the prosecutors. Misconduct this, misconduct that. That was how they tried the case, similar to our McNeil case, our Dr. McNeil case. Misconduct was how the defense tried the case. Well, OJ was acquitted. He was found not guilty. Should we provide him an avenue to sue the police and prosecutors just because he was acquitted? I don't think so. We should not increase his rights to get at county or state money just because he was found not guilty. In a recent case, we had a homicide case that was tried twice. In the first trial, the defendant was convicted. And in the second trial, he was acquitted. There were some errors made in that trial at the gathering of evidence stage that we didn't know about until the second trial. Well, the jury found him not guilty. Dateline came and did a story. In that story, Dateline interviewed the jurors and primarily the jury foreperson. And they said, we thought he was guilty, but we weren't one hundred percent sure. So in a case like that, should we be paying out money? Well, I would submit that is exactly how the system is to work. That in a close case, a jury made a tough decision. We don't agree with the decision, but nonetheless, the jury made that decision and that is how the system is supposed to work. But we should not decrease the ability of your attorneys or your police departments to pursue those cases just because they're close calls. Let me make a few other points before I close. I believe this proposal will have the effect of revictimizing crime victims. By allowing this resolution, if implemented, if implemented as written, it would allow a perpetrator, many years after a conviction, even if his or her case was upheld on appeal, to come back to this Commission and say, I was wronged. That victim will not have closure even if the appeal process is completely finished. And in a case where a perpetrator pleads guilty, normally there's no appeals left. This will give an avenue for that perpetrator to come in and say, well, the prosecutor did X, Y, and Z, and I want to undo my conviction or I want money from the county. It will give no closure to that crime victim. Last week, it was mentioned that this proposal is to address concerns people have with our office. Let me, Commissioner Graves made a good point last week. There are many people that have concerns, not only about my office, but about the County Commission, the County Sheriff, the state legislature, whoever it is. The decisions that you make as the County Commission, they affect people's lives. They affect their constitutional rights. And people don't like your decisions sometimes as well. But should we create a board to review your decisions? Or the sheriff's, or the clerks, or the surveyor's decisions? Or the justice court judge's decisions? I don't think so. We should not do that. You're elected to do a job as I am. And we should not create artificial oversight that is not authorized by the Constitution or law. Your oversight comes from the electorate and from the courts, as does mine with a couple other layers. Let me conclude. I may, I don't, I intended this with respect, but I may have been a little harsh. But it's because this proposal attacks, in my view, the people in my office. The attorneys and staff who day in and day out make very, very hard decisions, sometimes based upon limited evidence. And it's limited because that's what exists, not because we don't try to get it. This Commission would provide a forum. Let me back up. The people in my office are overworked and, as you know, underpaid based upon market. This, as proposed, attacks the integrity of what they do. I've been the County Attorney for eleven-plus years, I've been in the office for twenty years. I have never, ever heard of a decision made for political reasons or where politics was even an issue. We look at the law and the facts and we make decisions based upon that and nothing else. Now, the proposal that I drafted and the one that we discussed at length, I think it would function within the authority of law and within constitutional parameters. It would provide people who may have been harmed by this system, and I don't deny that there are people who are harmed by the system. There's no question that there are a few people that are harmed. It would allow them a forum that where they can ask for changes, where they can make allegations, where we can investigate them appropriately. And then I, as the County Attorney, along with the public defender's office, the courts, the state bar, whoever it is, the sheriff's office, we can work to make changes together. I think that the proposal that I have on the, with the Commission today would allow us to work together and not against each other as we work to improve the decisions that my office makes with our police departments. And I would submit, and I would ask the Commission, and I know it's on this week, to pass that one so we can move forward and start something that I think hasn't been done in many other offices. Elsewhere in the country, this has never been done by an outside political entity. It's always done as part of the prosecutor's office because that's constitutionally how it can be done and that's why we wrote it that way. Thank you for your time.
Can I, can we have some more conversation?
Sure.
Okay. Since we, you didn't take the opportunity to come and talk with me before about your proposal, which is fine. Couple of questions for you, I wanted to go back. And we all know what wheraces are, usually wheraces are just kind of statements and not. But the one, if, if there is a, if there's an allegation of misconduct, who defends that? Who would defend that for the county?
In the criminal courts, it'd be the County Attorney's Office.
And, and so, that whereas on there, it says the citizens of Utah County must pay. They would pay, they, I mean, you're paid through taxpayer dollars. The intent of that was that if there is, even if there's allegations that there are, I mean, it'd be paid by taxpayer dollars, which was the intent of that.
You're referring to the time we would represent in court?
The word is funded, not paid.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So just, that was just a clarification. Another question in the sense of, and this isn't supposed to be- Another, another question in the sense of, and this isn't supposed to be, we're not supposed to have, you know, I'm not trying to...
Go ahead.
...push you on it. The resolution that you put forward, is there any reason why you couldn't just do that anyway?
No.
So it doesn't need authority from the commission to do it?
It does not. But it, I, I want your support.
Sure. Yeah, and I have no problem with that. So as, as, as we go through this process, and I hope that, I, I want to get there and thank you. I mean, we've had this conversation in the past. We've seen this proposal, you know, maybe a little bit different in, in the past. There was some, there was some problems with it as we worked down through it. It's not exactly the same as we were crossing out lines and saying, "What if this, what if that?" Back and forth, and so we never got to a point in which we totally, fully, and a lot of it had to come down to grandma requests or open meetings acts and, and access to information on a public scale that just did not feel right to any of us that, that were up, you know, that were, that were discussing it. And we were doing it in an, in an administrative type of meeting...
Yes.
...in which we were trying to work down through these, these issues. And so I, I, I thank you for, for bringing yours forward on this. I think that it's part of the process in which we vetted all the way out, all the way through. I know there's a lot of emotion that gets attached to us, attached to it, but that's what allows for this process to have conversation and dialogue. There, and, and so, as we move down through, and like I said, I've had some conversations. I had a conversation with a former judge, and his first, his first thought was exactly what we've talked about all along, and he says, "Well, I think there was a process in place already. It's called the bar." And we continued to talk, and I said, and I mentioned to him kind of the, some of the reasoning behind it, and what was going on, and why, why this was an after effect, effect, and not yours is, yours is during and during the time.
But it is before, during, and after.
Before, during, yeah, and after. I mean, it, it has a lot of those ties on it, so that's the reason why it's after. After we had that conversation back and forth, he gave me some suggestions, which is the reason why I'd like to follow up with it. I don't know what's going to come out of the end of this. My hope is that what comes out of this is, is something that is fantastic for your office. It's a win-win in the sense that your office gets what you need. Obviously, you see that there's, you've, you know, demonstrated that there's a need for this type of a review, if we want to call it a review, but it also gives an opportunity for the, the, the public in general to feel comfortable with where we're at as well. And I think that's, that's, that's as important as, as what we're trying to do. So I would hope that as we continue to go through this process, I'm anticipating that we'll continue to go through this process, that we can continue to have the dialogue so that what comes out at the end is, is something that, that is, that is fantastic for us to work with.
I'd like to add on to that real quick, if I may. The only thing that bothers me is this, this direction. I stated this last week, and I hear the comments Commissioner Lee makes, and he says, "Something that we can do so that we get a win in your department." But you read a section out of the state constitution, whereas the commission cannot basically tell the sheriff how to be a sheriff and you to be an attorney. There's great wisdom in that, and I know that's weird from me to think there's great wisdom coming from the hill ever, but there was very good wisdom in that. And the problem is, is you have three individuals up here with different political agendas, maybe different viewpoints, different backgrounds. Doesn't make us wrong, doesn't make us evil, but at the same time, I do always feel it's inherently wrong to ever tell somebody who answers to the public and has the only position constitutionally mandated to tell you how to run your department, what would be the best way, and anything along those lines. And, and that in lies where I think the problem is for the commission, and that's why I say, if, you know, it, it's a joke, but it's a, it's an undertone of a joke going around now, after I said it last week, I know, because it's gotten back to me about twenty-five times about, well, why don't we create a commission to review the commission? Because you have people up here that never want to be second guessed, and I go around to many people in the county that are so fearful to talk to the commission with any regard, because they're always worried about what budgets are going to look like and what we're going to do to them. Is that really the way? And is that, if that's the, if that's the viewpoint from our employees, which it is, that whatever this commission does, nobody's going to speak out because they're worried about what we may do to punish, their words, not mine, then how dare us set up something to try and make your office better? And that's my problem. We need to, as a commission, fix ourselves and our, and our department so that that's not the perception out there while we're trying to fix something, fix a problem that doesn't exist. And that, that's my other problem, so.
Quick question for you, Jeff. I appreciate your time, your thoughts on this. I appreciate your proposal, and as we've discussed, for me, this is a policy decision, right? It's a legislative decision, it's not personal at all. It's how can we work together within our role as a legislative body, your role as an elected official, to try and serve the people better? And, and that's what this is for me, is, is trying to create something through that governing process. One of the thoughts and, and questions that came up, as I've discussed this issue with several people, in particular, since your, your item was posted back on the agenda for some public review, was, was the thought that, and it kind of ties into what Commissioner Graves has said, sometimes there's maybe a fear to come to the prosecutor's office if you feel that that's the office that's wronged you. Would there be a potential within the, the language of, of what you've proposed to have something come to the review commission that would have come maybe to us, and then we unanimously approved it to go to the review commission in consultation with you? Does that, does that kind of make sense? Just some type of language that would just give two avenues to access that review commission for review? That, that was just an idea that was brought to me. I thought it had some merit. I wanted to throw it out there for the public discussion, for people to think about as we review these proposals. And again, try and work through language that makes sense, because I think in the end, we're all after the same objective, and that's to, to use the governing process to better serve the citizens. And so that, that would be one thought that I would throw out as we review these and as we continue to look through them. Is there an avenue that could potentially create that?
It's interesting that you say that, because that was exactly one of the issues that the judge brought to me and said, you know, "Maybe you should consider looking at this," and that's the reason, part of the, part of the discussion with this, with the Supreme Court Chair Justice was, he says, "Maybe, maybe you could explore that area a little, just a little bit further." So I, I, I like that thinking.
But see, for me, I think it goes back to what Jeff said, and that is, the problem is with that is, every decision we make is subject to a lawsuit, a review, and we have only a handful of people defending us, the same group. So if we do it in consultation, and then all of a sudden, that, that creates that constitutional crisis that he's talking about, therein lies the problem. That is the problem. Unless we're going to hire and go public, or go privatize our own defense counsel all the time. I, I don't know how you would ever do that, because every decision, and you said unanimous, well, to have a unanimous decision would be...
If I may address what, what you mentioned, Commissioner Ivey. The way I proposed it already does that.
Okay.
So if you look on the first page, under number two B, it says, "Serve as a conviction, conviction integrity unit. At the request of a complainant or the county attorney, review old convictions with certain parameters." So a complainant who believes they were convicted wrongfully could go directly to, to this review commission and make that complaint directly.
Okay.
Now, as far as misconduct goes, that would need to come to the county attorney first, because my job, among other duties, is to police my office, and if the decision that I made, the complainant felt was inadequate, or I made the wrong decision, it would provide an avenue for them to go to this commit, or this review commission and let them look at it. It's already set up to do that. This commission could directly just send it to the, the chair of this review and advisory commission. You wouldn't even need to, you wouldn't have to vote on it. You could just individually send it to that chair and it would be on their agenda.
Okay. Not, I appreciate that clarification. Again, that came up through the conversation, and so I just wanted to make sure that we had that dialogue so that we understood the process there, because that was some of the feedback that I had received, that I thought was merit. I appreciate that clarification.
But see, your two B, for example, this, this is an interesting discussion, because you bring up the county attorney's policy of four, four point seventeen, review older cold, closed cases. But last week during the discussion, even Commissioner Lee stated, "The commissioner's proposal on the commission's agenda is a look forward. This is basically from the time passing going forward, not a look back." Yours actually goes back, but again, my problem is when you say, and it's the same thing with paying taxpayer money. Again, I understand what he's saying. What he's saying is, we're funding it, to, to defend any of these cases, we're funding it with taxpayer money. That's what Commissioner Lee's statement, the whereas, is, not that we are going to pay an award, which is why I struggled with the language last week. However, anytime we don't have a date, there needs, and, and again, you brought it up, you never get closure for these victims. I don't know why we wouldn't put dates. There comes a point in time where, you know, we shouldn't waste resources, because there are so many things going on. And again, you have asked for numerous and numerous attorneys and an increase in budget...
I would object to numerous, but...
Well, budget-wise, budget-wise, to run and be what you believe is needed to do the, the work of the county.
That's correct.
That's, that was what I'm referring to, and, and the problem is, is if we start doing and looking back, you're going to need even more, because who's going to do these reviews? Who's going to do some of these things? And again, we didn't even fund the request that you say meet the statutory requirements or the minimums that you need to do your job.
These reviews are not, there's no money attached to these.
Right. Let me address that.
Hold on, hold on. If there's no money attached, who's reviewing these? They are. If there's no money attached to that, then how are we paying with taxpayer dollars? It's the exact same thing. If Jeff's looking at it, there's taxpayer dollars. It's the same thing.
So let me address that, because that brings up an interesting point. The way these commissions or board, boards have normally been created throughout the country is as conviction, conviction integrity units under the umbrella of the county or district attorney. And that is an important tool, because, for example, we, we have homicide cases with people on death row at Utah State Prison, or people that, yeah, I think we have, I'm not sure, two, I believe. These long predated my term as a county attorney. But nationally, there have been some issues with homicide convictions, primarily on misidentification and on DNA. And this is a very, it's a narrow window. It's not saying anybody who doesn't like their conviction can come in and complain. It doesn't do that. What it does, it says, "In certain instances where there's new evidence that was not available at trial, that shows the person was not in fact guilty, we can reopen those cases, let this board look at it and make an, make an advisory, advise us whether to reopen the case, dismiss it, ignore the request, whatever it is." But we do need to be cautious that we say we will never, ever, ever look at a closed case, but we have to make sure the window is relatively narrow and based upon new evidence that was not available at trial. And so it refers to one of our policies, which is basically mirrors that was done nationally, which says, "Okay, here's the opening. If there, if your case meets that opening, then we will look at it." Because we, again, prosecutors are not perfect, police are not perfect. We acknowledge that. And it hasn't happened in, in our county, but there in fact was a case out of Davis County, and I know the prosecutors there disagree with this, but the court found the woman not guilty. I don't remember her name. But this was within the last couple of years. So we do need to have that crack there that allows us to look at some old cases, but it's not, it's not, it's not a big crack.
Sure, but see, in a lot of these cases too, so you, you keep alleging to somebody who we've gone through two trials, one where there was a conviction with a misgathering, gathering of misinformation or evidence, however, whatever the word you use, and then was acquitted. But see, the thing is, is we're going to get a chance to review that, whether we have this board or not, because many of these individuals file suit against the county, at which we review all the processes we go through. There will be another judge that will then determine whether or not there was any misconduct, mistakes that led to harm, or whatever, whatever level that is, and then apply a financial reward to it. So that's what I'm trying to understand is, I don't know, like, are we trying to help that process so that we can help those people beat the county easier? Or, well, right, that's, I mean, that's actually against our sworn duty. Or are we trying to do something like we did with the BRT process? Are we trying to be the step before that step? That, that's what I'm trying to understand where this is coming at, because, and, and by the BRT process, what I'm referring to is this constitutional hole that doesn't allow due process for cities to file a complaint against an election official. We, we created a county ordinance to allow due process. That's what I'm wondering if this is that attempt. That's what, that's where I'm trying to figure out where this falls in that range.
To be honest, I'm not sure. Maybe you could...
Well, either proposal. That, I, I don't know if, if, if we're doing this look back, are we doing a look back again to help somebody get a financial reward?
No.
Because all these people are going to, I say no, you say no. I don't know that that's what a lot of people are looking at. I, I don't know. I, I can't speak for anybody.
I will say that under the two B, if in fact there was a determination that someone was convicted, that was innocent and sent to prison, there already is a mechanism to pay them through the state legislature. So that already exists. Is that kind of answer what you're saying?
Well, I, I'm just saying, on either one, whether it's your proposal that doesn't need commission approval, okay? Or on the one that the commission has created, I'm trying to figure out where in this, in this process, we're trying to put this, and, and what, what we're really trying to do here. Because again, if we're not trying to attack the people, or we're saying there's misconduct, then why not just let you do yours internally? Let's see what happens and, and readdress this in a year or two and, and see what you learn, or whoever, right? That, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, I agree with that, but I, I do think there's benefit in having the commission support as we do this process, and allowing the commission to have some visibility. You, we are not probably an open book as much as the commission is, because we have a, a lot of protected information from victims. But I do think the process, as much as it can be, needs to be open, and this would allow a little bit more openness to that process, not always beforehand, but it would allow us to maybe have a little more transparency, and I think there's benefit to having the commission...
Yep, but support... Can I ask you a question on the topic of transparency?
Support for you don't mean finances, too.
Well, it means political support as well.
Right, right. But, but I mean, financially, and this is where I'm really getting at. You and I have had this discussion for three-plus years. I have supported everything after, well, not everything, most of your proposals after lengthy discussion and understanding why and how we get there. You and I have had many conversations over there. My problem is, is if there are mistakes being made by people in the county right now, and you're coming to us saying, "My people are overworked, and therefore, because we're looking at this and this and this," the, the support starts by the commission first funding your request so that you're starting on an even keel, so that you actually have the workflow, so that we can find out if our people are competent, working, doing the job that they're doing.
That's correct.
Now, I'm not alleging anybody's incompetent right now. What I'm saying is, if we get the caseload that they deserve, are they more competent and not making mistakes, any mistakes, right? Which is a standard you try and live by.
Absolutely, that's true. Resourcing us and the sheriff and the public defender at an adequate level will obviously create fewer mistakes. Yes.
I can ask you the question then, on, on, you know, talking about transparency. As I read this and correct, uh, yours, I'm looking, looking through yours, this is, this is all internal, and so there's, there's no mechanism in here for an, an outside report? Is that correct?
I, I think that's generally correct.
I thought there was a provision on there that they provided us with the report periodically.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I have to go back and...
Well, that's not, I'm, I'm talking about public.
But once it goes to the commission, it's available to the public.
So there'd be, where, where is that in your section?
I'd have to go back and look.
I'd have to, I, I recall reading that they provided a report to us that would then be public.
What would be in that report typically?
I'd have to go back and look. I know we talked about that a number of times in our discussions, but I don't, I'd have to go back and look exactly.
That's number six. "The board shall provide a written report to the Utah County Commission at a minimum on an annual basis regarding its activities and progress. The report shall be published in the Utah County website." Is that, or am I reading the wrong one?
I don't see that. And number six? I see six is confidentiality. Is that where you're at?
Mine must be on the wrong one here, one sec. Read too many of these things.
That one, that one's the other one.
That's the wrong one. You're correct. I stand corrected on that.
Anyway, we can, we can work on through that.
But I remember we talked about that reporting process.
I remember that was part of the discussion, but I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I clicked on the wrong addition there.
Well, I just, you know, as we go through the process, now that it's gone from administrative talking, and now it's out in the open for more discussion, again, going through the process, I, I like the fact that now we have the thought out there. There's some points on here that I, that, that you made today, which, which I needed, I, I'd like to take into, into account as well, some, there's some good points. Some, there's some good points. I don't like that when you say constitutional crisis on there. That always throws red flags up for me. That needs to be looked down through. I do have that, that section of code right here that you're, you're referring to. And there is, you know, and we need to have some discussion because there's a few things I think that were, you were kind of, I mean, we didn't read through the whole thing. And so there's, there's some touch points. But I'd like to, you know, continue to have that, that discussion as we, as we look at strengthening this, either with support from the commission for what you're trying to do or some hybrid of it as we move forward.
And I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. All right. Well, this time we would open it for public comment. I know there are several here who'd like to comment.
Commissioners, thank you very much. My name is Randy Kennard. I'm a prosecutor here in your county attorney's office. I've been there. I think this is my fifteenth year. And so I'd just like to have a chance to be able to speak to you for just a few moments. I think I'm a typical prosecutor and I think that maybe some information I can share about my perception of my job can help you as you make these decisions. I think ultimately we can all agree that the primary concern we have with the Utah County Attorney's Office is that it performs ethical jobs to protect our community in, in the best way possible, preserving everybody's rights. I've been a prosecutor for about seventeen years, as I said, my fifteenth year in this office. During that time, I've handled probably four thousand cases. I've gone to trial since being here fifty-six times in the district court in front of juries. Out of that, I've convicted eighty percent of the cases that I've taken to trial. I, I think I'm a fairly typical prosecutor. In that period of time, I've had of those cases, I believe eleven go up on appeal. One of those was returned as an error for an issue where the appellate courts believed that the judge on the case had improperly suppressed, denied a motion to suppress. Basically, in all those cases, nothing had ever come back alleging that I had done something improper. And in fact, in the fifteen years and the thousands of cases that I've handled, there's never been a time where anything formally has ever come back saying that I have done something improper, violated somebody's rights. Certainly, in many of those cases, as they proceeded through the courts, there have been allegations made because that's a typical avenue of, of, of attack that's used by defense attorneys in cases. My main concern here is to be able to stand up for the proposition that there's a cost for everything. Right now, the typical attorney in our office handles a caseload of three hundred and sixty cases a year. Way above ninety percent of those are felonies. And so a person like me with a general assignment of general felonies is having to handle, is having a new case. You've got to remember, there's only two hundred and sixty business days in a year, not counting holidays. Count holidays and the liberal vacation we get from the county, you're dropping to probably somewhere around two hundred and forty actual business days in a year. An assigned prosecutor in our office has to handle in that two hundred and forty days to stay even approximately three hundred and sixty felony cases. And so to do that requires a judicial use of resources. And the prosecutor's ability to be able to effectively use the limited resources he has has a direct effect upon how many people out there in the community wake up in the morning and go out into their garage to find that the tools that they had accumulated over the years had been stolen by a meth addict. A person who's going to be subject to violent crime. Because we are the people who are tasked with the ability to protect our community. And right now, we are under a very taxing situation to be able to deal with those three hundred and sixty cases in two hundred and forty days. Now, there, I've heard, you know, in discussions here, you know, that part of a, a concern often of laypersons is why do prosecutors resolve cases by plea bargain, things like this? Just one attorney's caseload in this office, if they were to go to trial and you could accomplish those trials in one day, would take more than a year and a half worth of the court's time to be able to do that. To handle all the cases that come into our office at a jury trial level would take over ten years in one year. And so what you have is the situation where we are dealing with very serious consequences for our community and we're on the front line trying to deal with that. It's what I perceive as a negative of what's being considered here is the circumstances of what I would put akin to friendly fire in a war. It's bad enough to have to deal with the enemy without having to look over your back to be able to see that you're getting attacked somewhere else. Now, as Mr. Buman has indicated, we're one of the most highly scrutinized government agencies because we every day appear before a separate branch of the government, the judiciary, every day in front of a judge who's assigned to a case and who has an obligation to follow the law, be neutral, and, and to be on the, on the lookout for things that are improper. Every day we do that. In addition to those circumstances, to have a scenario where you've got an outside body that's wanting to come in and look at cases, and I don't know how you can effectively look at four thousand cases a year when it takes a prosecutor who's, who's experienced to do this and has a lot of practice. You know, we are struggling to be able to do that just on an individual basis. How somebody could come in and review my three hundred and sixty-five cases a day in a way that makes sense, I don't, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, is that this circumstance of having another body look at our cases is going to create a situation where it's going to increase my workload. In the three hundred and sixty-five cases I had, if there were thirty cases where allegations were made that I had done something improper, I'm sure that I would have to be involved in that process and explaining why I had, I had done things. And that would detract from my abilities. I'll just give as a final example of, of this concern that I have, a recent case I had with an individual who's a business owner in our community who had a couple of employees come in and defraud him out of probably fifty to a hundred thousand dollars worth of property. He fired him. An investigation was done. Charges were filed by my office. In addition to the three hundred and so odd cases that I had, I had this case. And it was a husband and wife, and they were the defendants. And they decided they were going to defend this case by going with the big guns. And so we had high-powered, expensive attorneys out of, out of Salt Lake County coming down to every hearing. And the way they attacked that case is they attacked me. And so as we were going through that process, allegations were made in there almost weekly that I was doing things improper. And I can tell you what, that's a stressful situation to be there with an individual who's a victim, appearing in court sometimes with four attorneys over on this side, and you're in front of this judge, and you're trying to do the right thing by this case, and you're overwhelmed. And part of you at some point gets to the point and says, why don't I just give them what I, what they want? Why don't I just give them what they want and I could be done with this? It's only one person. He's only been victimized. But we've got an ethical responsibility to do what is correct despite what the perceptions of other people are. And so we fought through that and we convicted these people. One of the great reasons why we have the protections of immunity as prosecutors is to be able to engender the, the idea that we will pursue cases based upon the facts and what justice requires and not based upon circumstances like politicals, political considerations, considerations of money, things like that. I can tell you this case that I fought with these individuals, if these ability, if they would have had the ability to be able to come into a commission and be able to say that I was doing things wrong to slow me down and basically to try to get another avenue of attack against me, they would have. And so ultimately, my personal opinion is, is that this is a, a solution looking for a problem that doesn't exist respectfully. And I, 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 I hope that you would just consider the consequences of the extra burden that this puts on your already overworked prosecutors and our ability to protect the community by doing our job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Tracy, Utah County. I'm here to speak both as the sheriff, elected sheriff, and also as a member of the Utah County Enforcement Executives Association. That's a group that is comprised of myself and all the other acting chiefs that are currently employed. I rise to, to present to the commission a letter that was drafted by us, also to make two personal comments. If I could, could I bring this letter?
Your bet. And you're fine with it being public? Okay.
I think that Mr. Buman has really presented the case most eloquently. And in the interest of brevity, I'm going to make two personal comments. And then there, I think there may be some other chiefs that might want to make comment. But personally, I'm concerned about any type of process that brings something extrajudiciary into the system, external to the judiciary. It's just a slippery slope. And, and the reasons for that, I think, have been presented by Mr. Buman quite well. You know, where does it end? How does it consume public time, public resources? And what chilling effect might it have? That's my second and most concerning issue. When it comes to domestic violence, when it comes to sexual abuse, those are almost always he said, she said cases. There's rarely much evidence. Sometimes there is, but many times there isn't. Those cases are brought forward in the interest of justice for the victim. Within that system, there is already an oversight committee that consists of those many things that have already been discussed, whether there's a wrongful conviction or there's a alleged misconduct in prosecutorial efforts or, or investigation. You've got a defense counsel. You've got a trial judge. You've got a jury of one's peers sitting there. You've got a state appeals court. You've got the Utah Bar. You've got the federal appeals circuit court. You've got the US Supreme Court. And ultimately, you have five hundred thousand plus voting individuals that are Utah County constituents. All those are reviews at certain levels. All those have remedies at certain levels based on what may or may not happen within a wrongful conviction or something that's an error in prosecution or an error in police work. So I, I would suggest that we really stay away from the slippery slope. That we don't end up in the system that does something that has many unintended consequences for both victims and for the opportunity to, you know, provide safety, public safety to the county residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ivy, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Graves. My name is Brad James. I'm the police chief in Salem. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I first want to let you know I am in full support of the letter that Sheriff Tracy handed to you. I had actually prepared my feelings in a form of a letter also prior to that one being made. I'd just like to read that if that's amiss of you guys.
Okay.
After serving in law enforcement for nearly forty years, I can appreciate the difficult challenges that each of you face as you serve Utah County. Approximately nine months ago, I became aware of a request that you received from a small group of citizens to create a commission to review the actions of the Utah County Attorney's Office. I thought at the time the request would quickly dissipate as the county commission would have moved forward on to other matters. I felt this way because after serving as a police chief for sixteen years with former county attorney K. Bryson, and for the past eleven years with county attorney Jeff Buman, I cannot recall one substantiated incident of prosecutorial misconduct in the Utah County Attorney's Office. From my experience over the years, I'm well aware that the tough decisions and actions that you make as a public servant will produce well-intended citizens who are critical of public servants' actions and decisions. We are fortunate to live in a country that allows us as citizens to seek retributions from those who have wronged us. We are lucky to have a constitution that allows citizens to openly voice opinions and concerns. I am here today to voice my opinion as a law enforcement officer and also as a taxpayer in this county. I am adamantly opposed to the resolution that would create a prosecutorial review board designed to attack and bring discredit to the county attorney's office. I've worked side by side with fine men and women of the Utah County Attorney's Office. I've found them to perform their jobs ethically, efficiently, and without prejudice. Our review board is unnecessary. They're currently in an array of procedural mechanisms already in place that serves as the checks and balances against instances of prosecutorial misconduct. Our prosecutors and their prosecutions are already scrutinized by defense counsel, the trial courts, the appeal courts, and the state bar. Furthermore, a high standard is already in place. Our prosecutors must prove beyond a reasonable doubt that a defendant is guilty. If for any reason the defense counsel can create the slightest doubt in one juror's mind, an otherwise guilty individual is acquitted and walks free. Our prosecutors must convince each and every juror that the individual is guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. If this review commission is established, I'm concerned that the rights of victims in our county to receive their day in court. In other words, what well-intended prosecutor would be willing to tackle tough cases such as a rape, a sexual assault, a domestic violence case, or a homicide, knowing that there is an additional layer of scrutiny that could erode the prosecutor's immunity from lawsuits? I'm concerned that the creation of the prosecutor review board will impede the efficient administration of justice and adversely affect public safety by subjecting already busy prosecutors to investigations and hearings at the whim of a disgruntled defendant, victim, or other member of the public. And lastly, I am confident if the, that the creation of this oversight committee to review as proposed was a good idea, it would have been created a long time ago and would already have it activated in this country. I appreciate your attentiveness. I do appreciate your consideration and denying of the approval of the resolution that was presented last week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment before the next person comes up because I see people leaving on it?
Your bet.
I haven't had anybody come in as prosecutors yet to my office to talk, which I find a little concerning. My door is open. I would love to talk. I know you're really busy with law enforcement. I rearranged some schedules to have them come in and, and visit with me. So I just wanted to make sure and say that before people are leaving to go do their job, which I anticipate they are.
Additional comment?
My name is Christine Scott. I'm a resident of Utah County and I am a deputy Utah County attorney. Let me say, Commissioner Lee, I appreciate that. I will be visiting your office. I appreciate that open door policy. My comments are going to dovetail a little bit on Mr. McBryant's last week. I work with Ryan. He's a fine attorney. In many ways, he's been my mentor. And I agree with him when he says that the feeling amongst us is that this represents a vote of no confidence in our office, in us personally. But I also think it, it evinces a vote of no confidence in our system. There's been a lot of talk about checks and balances, which is an essential part of our system of government. But I haven't heard a whole lot of talk about the balance of power, the separation of power, other than what Jeff talked about this morning, which is the other critical element of our system of government. For instance, let's take the issue of prosecutorial immunity. This is apparently a big enough issue to warrant its own whereas paragraph in the commission's draft resolution. Whereas prosecutorial immunity can create obstacles and barriers for victims to obtain justice. Where does prosecutorial immunity come from? I'd ask the commission to refer to the Supreme Court case of Imbler v. Pacman, nineteen seventy-six case, citation is four twenty-four U.S. four oh nine. This is a case where the Supreme Court established absolute immunity for prosecutors in civil actions brought under forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three. The Supreme Court did not consider this issue lightly or ill-advisedly and addressed the concerns this commission articulated in its draft resolution. You'll bear with me. I'd like to quote some of that language. The court recognized as well-settled the common law rule of immunity. And the issue before them was whether that common law absolute immunity should be extended to actions brought under forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three or if a prosecutor should only have qualified immunity. The court said, quote, "If a prosecutor had only a qualified immunity, the threat of a nineteen eighty-three suit would undermine the performance of his duties no less than with the threat of common lawsuits for malicious prosecution. A prosecutor is duty-bound to exercise his best judgment, both in deciding which suits to bring and in conducting them in court. The public trust of the prosecutor's office would suffer if he were constrained in making every decision by the consequences in terms of his own potential liability in a suit for damages. Such suits could be expected with some frequency for a defendant often will transform his resentment at being prosecuted into the inscription of improper and malicious actions to the state's attorney. Further, if the prosecutor could be made to answer in court each time such a person charged him with wrongdoing, his energy and attention would be diverted from the pressing duty of enforcing the criminal law." I think Mr. Kennard explained how that operates. The court acknowledged that, quote, "Frequently acting under serious constraints of time and even information, a prosecutor inevitably makes many decisions that could engender colorable claims of constitutional deprivation. Defending these decisions, often years after they were made, could impose unique and intolerable burdens upon a prosecutor responsible annually for hundreds of indictments and trials." And I, I would, Randy is the best keeper of statistics in our office. We have not hundreds of cases, thousands of cases. We have not hundreds of cases, thousands of cases. The court concluded that, quote, "The considerations outlined above dictate the same absolute immunity under 1983 that the prosecutor enjoys a common law. To be sure, this immunity does leave the genuinely wrong defendant without civil redress against a prosecutor whose malicious or dishonest action deprives him, excuse me, of liberty. But the alternative of qualifying a prosecutor's immunity would disserve the broader public interest. It would prevent the vigorous and fearless performance of the prosecutor's duty that is essential to the proper functioning of the criminal justice system." With the issue thus framed, the court finds ourselves in agreement with Judge Larned Hand, who wrote of the prosecutor's immunity from actions for malicious prosecution, quote, "As is so often the case, the answer must be found in a balance between the evils inevitable in either alternative. In this instance, it has been thought, in the end, better to leave unredressed the wrongs done by dishonest officers than to subject those who try to do their duty to the constant dread of retaliation." The court concluded by emphasizing that, quote, "The immunity of prosecutors from liability in suits under 1983 does not leave the public powerless to deter misconduct or to punish that which occurs. This court has never suggested that the policy considerations which compel civil immunity for certain governmental officials also place them beyond the reach of the criminal law." Even judges, cloaked with absolute civil immunity for centuries, could be punished criminally for willful deprivations of constitutional rights on the strength of 18 USC 242, the criminal analog of Section 1983. "The prosecutor would fare no better for his willful acts. Moreover, a prosecutor stands perhaps unique among officials, whose acts would deprive persons of constitutional rights in his amenability to professional discipline by an association of his peers," which is the state bar. These checks undermine the argument that the imposition of civil liability is the only way to ensure that prosecutors are mindful of the constitutional rights of persons accused of crime. I would further say that these checks undermine the argument that the creation of a prosecutorial oversight board is the only way to ensure that prosecutors are mindful of the constitutional rights of persons accused of crime. There are checks and balances for what prosecutors do. There's one other aspect of this resolution that I haven't heard discussed. What liability does this committee create for the county, the commissioners, and the members of the prosecutorial oversight board? The first question in answering that is what is the purpose of this oversight board? It can't award damages, levy sanctions, it can't overturn convictions, it can't make employment decisions for individual prosecutors who are merit employees. Only Jeff can do that. It can't dictate the policies and procedures for the county attorney's office. Commissioner Lee addressed this issue last week. Instead, the purpose is to, and I'm quote, "shine light after the fact." What exactly does that mean? The answer to my question is found in Paragraph Six of the resolution. "The board shall provide a written report to the Utah County Commission at a minimum on an annual basis regarding its activities and progress. The report shall be published on the Utah County website." So the board and the commission would be publishing to the world that, in its opinion, certain prosecutors were guilty of prosecutorial misconduct. I talked earlier about the absolute immunity afforded prosecutors, but now I need to talk about qualified immunity. Qualified immunity is a defense available to the board members and the commission members as individuals in the discharge of their duties. Supreme Court in Saucier versus Katz, 533 U.S. 194, 2001, elaborated a two-part test for whether a government official is entitled to qualified immunity. First, the court must look at whether the facts indicate that a constitutional right has been violated. If so, court must then look at whether that right was clearly established at the time of the alleged conduct. What constitutional right might the board and commission violate in their examination of alleged prosecutorial misconduct? In both the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment, the Constitution provides that no one shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. This is the core value around which our justice system was designed. The system guarantees defendants both substantive and procedural due process. While it is true that the board and commission do not have the power to deprive a prosecutor under investigation of life or liberty, they can deprive that prosecutor of property in the form of character or reputation. In fact, in this day and age of online commerce and social media, legal scholars are calling reputation the new property, something that has quantifiable value outside of a common-law defamation of character action. For example, let's say that the board of views, one of my cases, determines there was prosecutorial misconduct and presents its findings to the commission. Commission then ratifies and publishes online that they have determined I have committed prosecutorial misconduct. What if at some point I decide to run for office or apply for judicial vacancy? Is there any question that my opponents would use this published finding against me to challenge the fitness of my character to hold office or be appointed to the bench? Even now, before the resolutions have passed, in this infancy of formation, the very concept of this board is being used by candidates in an election year for political gain. So now, the board and commission have deprived me of a property right. The question then becomes, did it do so without due process of law? This is where the whole thing falls apart and becomes a minefield of liability for the board and commission members. The resolution seems to suggest that all of this can be hashed out at some later date through bylaws. How are bylaws going to protect my right to both substantive and procedural due process? What is the standard of proof for determining whether I have committed prosecutorial misconduct, and who bears the burden of proving it? Do the rules of evidence apply? Do the rules of criminal procedure or civil procedure apply? Do I have the right not to incriminate myself, to confront and cross-examine my accuser, to compel witnesses to appear and testify on my behalf, to be provided with evidence not known to me but that may be exculpatory, or impeach the credibility of witnesses against me? Do I have the right to be represented? Do I have the right to an impartial finder of fact and an impartial application of the law? Do I have the right to be represented or to appeal a decision against me? If the board's bylaws and the application of those bylaws deny me of my substantive and procedural due process, then the board members and the commissioners, from whom the board receives its authority, violate an existing constitutional right? According to Saucier, that would mean that not only is the county liable for damages, but the individual board members and individual commissioners are liable because they wouldn't have a qualified immunity defense. Mr. Boyack from Libertas spoke last commission meeting about how excited people in his organization are to be part of the board. Would they be as excited if they knew they were opening themselves up to personal liability? I'm now twenty-one years into my professional career. My career has been more varied than some, less varied than others. I'm proud of what I've done with the education and talents I've been given. I've been a police officer, and I'm honored to have served with men and women who work under difficult, physical, and emotional conditions for little pay, often for no reason other than they want to make their community better. I will always have a deep and abiding respect for these individuals and the job they do. Under the direction of a Utah Court of Appeals judge, I wrote a minority opinion, which was ultimately affirmed by the U.S. Supreme Court, making it clear what officers can do to protect people from harm in times of emergency. That was important. I have worked with foremost religious liberty and human rights scholars in drafting the constitutions of emerging democracies in Central Asia. But what I am doing right now is my magnum opus. I am a member of the Special Victims Unit in the Utah County Attorney's Office. This is by far the hardest thing I've ever done, but also the most rewarding if for one reason, the victims. When you consider this resolution, I ask that you consider these people and the impact your actions will have on them. I have sat in my office and cried with victims as I have tried to prepare them to sit in a courtroom full of strangers, facing their abuser, and relate in explicit detail what is often the most painful and degrading experience of their life. I think often of a victim who is one of the strongest people I've ever known. Her abuser was held accountable by a jury. She's one of the few who have tasted justice, but she told me that had she known how hard it would be, she never would have come forward. There is no way a prosecutorial oversight board can review my cases without affecting the victims. It will inevitably reopen chapters in their lives they simply want to shut, more questions, more strangers, more exposure. I'm going to continue to do my job regardless of what you decide, because I love it, I'm committed to it. However, I have a responsibility to support my family and consider my future. If you pass this resolution, it will have the effect the Supreme Court was concerned about. I may pass on difficult or high-profile cases, simply because I know that I will have people looking over my shoulder and second-guessing my decisions who offer me neither due process nor impartiality, as they make decisions that affect my livelihood and future. Instituting a prosecutorial oversight board does not make Utah County innovators of change. It makes them followers of the vocal minority who use misinformation, isolated events, and hyperbole to foment division and distrust, often for their own personal and political agendas. Instead, Utah County has the opportunity to be the vanguard of the asylum majority who trust their public officials and trust the system. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to our conversation.
And I'd like to correct one thing, just clarify, not correct, sorry. Your statement when you said the commission put this together, I was not involved in drafting this whatsoever, and I think, and I believe my opposition is firmly noted for everybody to, so. But I understand I do get labeled with these gentlemen.
We all do.
So you never, you never?
I did not draft the resolution on the agenda.
I just want to make sure, because I've heard different.
I support Jeff Buman's policy.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jason Growth, and I'm the Smart Justice Coordinator with the ACLU of Utah. Admittedly, this is a very difficult discussion, and some believe that the oversight committee is an attack on integrity of prosecutors. I'm a former public defender in Colorado, and I've handled hundreds of cases with prosecutors at the trial level. Prosecutor's job is tough, and difficult decisions have to be made on a daily basis. There's no getting around that. Anecdotally, although I often disagreed with the prosecutor's decision, should be no surprise as a defense attorney, the overall majority of those decisions didn't flirt with misconduct. Most prosecutors work to fulfill the ideals of justice, for fair outcomes that are in the best interest of the communities that they serve. And at times, prosecutors strive to meet ends of justice at the cost of emotional and physical well-being. The ACLU of Utah understands that an oversight committee may feel punitive where there's not a significant number of prosecutorial misconduct cases in Utah County that have led to disciplinary actions. And I think that's probably the toughest part about this discussion, is that it feels like it is attacking your very livelihood, which admittedly is a very tough job. It is an extremely tough job. But the ACLU of Utah also understands that a prosecutor is the most powerful person in the criminal justice system. Prosecutor decides what charges to file, what plea deals to offer, and what bond arguments to make at a bond hearing. A prosecutor brings the power of the state, which includes law enforcement, against the individual and can deprive that individual of life, liberty, and property. A person accused of a crime often lacks the same sort of resources that a county attorney or district attorney's office has at its disposal, and this creates an inherent imbalance in the system. Prosecutorial review board is a way to address this imbalance and ensure fair and just outcomes for both the individuals and the community itself. The criminal justice system has other inherent imbalances, notably in prosecuting persons of color. In the last several years, whites have been underrepresented in Utah's jail and prison populations, while minorities are overrepresented. For example, Utah itself is about eighty percent white, but accounts for about sixty-five percent of the incarcerated population. Looking at African-Americans, comprises about one percent of the population, but that's six percent of the incarcerated population. The Hispanic population in Utah is about thirteen percent, but accounts for twenty-four percent incarcerated population, and the one percent native population in Utah accounts for about four percent of the incarcerated population. And unfortunately, recently, if you look at the report from the Justice Reinvestment Initiative in 2017, their annual report, that disparity has actually increased since the JRI was initiated back in 2015. That has increased from thirty-four percent of the prison population, new entrants into the prison population being minorities, to forty-three percent in about two years. Utah's criminal justice system, even after substantial changes, which have been beneficial for reform efforts, still needs work to account for these disparities. An oversight committee could assess whether Utah County's policies and practices contribute to the ratio of disparities in the system and address those issues accordingly. Of course, these are statewide disparities and not unique to Utah County, but they do exist and they need to be addressed. Additionally, there is organizations who right the wrongs. I think they've been brought up in this discussion, including Innocence Project, the wrongs that occur in the criminal justice system. These are great organizations, and they do wonderful work, and they help exonerate innocent people. It's however unfortunate that they have to exist because of a flawed system. To correct these serious problems in the system, the time from a wrongful conviction to exoneration can take years. These are years of a person's life and years of taxpayers footing the bill for wrongful conviction. The National Registry of Exonerations found that forty-three percent of wrongful convictions are attributable to official misconduct, and the oversight committee can review these cases quickly and efficiently to determine whether misconduct even exists and hopefully avoid an innocent person lingering in jail or prison, while the actual perpetrator is free. The ACLU of Utah commands the commission for its efforts to improve Utah County's criminal justice system, and we support adopting the resolution establishing the Utah County Prosecutorial Reform Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, though?
Yes, please.
This constitutional crisis consideration in there, if the commission, if this review board was to subpoena, how do we step past that? How do we get past that so that it's not a constitutional crisis in the sense that the county attorney's office is the legal representation for our office? And if they were to challenge that in court, how would that happen?
So I think that's a really difficult question that may not be best answered in the amount of time that we do have, but I guess one of the considerations is looking at appointing alternative counsel. I think it might be an issue where we have a conflict of interest, similarly in a county attorney, district attorney's office, and looking at another attorney from another office to take on some of those issues. But I think that's a very weighty question, and I'd be happy to have those discussions down the road.
Okay. And I need to clarify one statement that happened. Not, sorry, with you. You can go ahead and sit down. When, it's actually against the law for commissioners to craft something together, to go on an agenda, and so, you know, a statement of, well, I'm not involved in the crafting of this, of course, because it's against the law for us to get together and craft a statement to put on together, but nevertheless, it doesn't change the fact of statements before or, you know, during our administrative meetings of a thought of going forward. So I just want to put that out there.
Rebecca Martel, Children's Justice Center. If there's anything I've learned over the last eight years that I've been with the county and with the Children's Justice Center, it's that policies can be made with the best of intentions and have unintended consequences. And I am extremely concerned about the unintended consequences for crime victims with the pass of this resolution or policy. One potential consequence to this resolution could be that would make prosecutors more hesitant to file on those hard-to-convict cases, the cases that our special victims unit sees, cases that include domestic violence and sex crimes, including those involving children. Another potential consequence for victims is that they could be less likely to report because they could be open to revictimization by a defendant filing a complaint with this committee and possibly whatever might be published online from this committee's findings. There are also issues with the community not having access to the full information. There are specific parts of prosecution that are protected. There are specific parts of prosecution, um, that are protected. And so they would be making decisions based on something where they don't see the full picture. Uh, the biggest issue I think that we have is that we haven't heard from any victims on their perspective as to how this would affect them. So if you guys are choosing to move forward with this, what I would strongly recommend is that whatever policy you look to, um, vote on be first reviewed by the Crime Victim Counsel. Um, they are experts in the field of policy development for victims' rights. And I spoke to them this morning and they said they would be happy to work with you guys on that. It's the, it's the counselor for victims of crime. It's a statewide council.
Did you help us arrange that?
Yes, absolutely.
Probably on an individual basis?
Yes.
Have to be individual, but that'd be great.
So that's really all in conclusion I wanted to say. I just think we really need to stop and take a look at the full consequences for victims with this.
Can we make sure and have an appointment where we talk?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, come before you today. Uh, my name is Kerry Cole. I'm a law enforcement officer with Saratoga Springs. I'm a sergeant currently assigned to the Bluffdale Precinct in Salt Lake County. But with that being said, I'm here on a personal note. So I want to give my personal opinion. I've been in law enforcement for thirty-two years. Began as an investigator for a little division called Utah Motor Vehicle Enforcement. My first interaction with county attorney's office was in a building just across the street here in an upstairs office with a prosecutor named Kay Bryson. Working with Kay was my first interaction with county attorney. And, uh, I had no prior experience screening cases or how it should be done. For the next seventeen years, I've worked for the state and had the opportunity to work with many county attorney offices around Utah. Often I mentally, mentally compare those encounters to my experiences with Utah County. I found the Utah County, uh,'s office, prosecutor's office to have set a very high bar. Several years ago, I was, uh, able to put, help put the Saratoga Springs Police Department together. And a few years later, I was assigned as a sergeant over investigations. During that assignment, I had the opportunity to again interact with the Utah County's prosecutor's office. While the names and faces had changed, I found the professionalism and integrity of that office to be just as high as it was back thirty years ago. I don't know, um, many of the prosecutors now, but such people as Tim Taylor and a few others have integrity that is seldom seen other places. I want to say one thing in the stats that the person brought in, um, stating what the differences is in minority convictions and things. I don't believe once Utah County statistics were brought up. That's something that maybe you'll want to, to look at. In my, uh, opinion, uh, the Utah County Prosecutor's Office still is the leader in the state of Utah. And other offices I feel should strive to follow that. And I've, like I said, worked with many. I believe changing how things are done within the prosecutor's office at this time would only be detrimental to the quality and integrity of the office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be able just to say a few things.
Just your name for the record to start with.
My name is Lieutenant Dennis Harris, who are the Utah County Sheriff's Office. I've been both a Provo police officer and a deputy sheriff. I've worked under three sheriffs and served our county, I hope, well, for almost the last thirty-eight and a half years. I've worked under four county attorneys. I've worked under Noel Wooten, Kilp- Stephen Kilpak, Carlisle, uh, Carlisle Bryson, and currently Jeff Buman. I've made my rounds working in almost every division of the sheriff's office and many of them twice. In the Deseret News on August the twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, it quoted, "Utah County is on track to become perhaps the first county in the nation to create an independent review board to hold its prosecutors accountable." That's one of the reasons I wanted to stand up and speak to all three of you. This would create, and it goes to say that this would create a review committee that would determine whether a case was handled appropriately and ethically. The Deseret News said that you wanted to be strong on crime. At the same time, it quoted you as saying you, you don't want them to go in the wrong direction. Jeff Buman has been a prosecutor in Utah County from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand six. He was elected by the citizens of this county as a twenty-second Utah County Attorney for Utah County. He has literally prosecuted thousands of cases. Most were crimes of violence, DUI, and drug crimes. Jeff has represented his office in Utah County in a variety of capacities for many organizations, including the Statewide Association of Prosecutors, the Utah County Children's Justice Center, Provo College School of Justice, the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force, the Fourth District Victims' Right Committee, and many others. There are only a few, these are only a few of the reasons that the citizens of Utah County elected him as a county attorney. They elected him because of his knowledge, experience, and commitment to justice. This is definitely not a positive step forward in my opinion. This is a negative step backwards. Our checks and balances lie in the hands of citizens who either vote him in or vote him out. It is obvious that the citizens of this county have had a great deal of support and confidence in our current chief law enforcement officer. We do not need another review board to hold prosecutors accountable because it's our citizens that do this. To create the only review board in the United States for our county attorney is a vote against the citizens of our county, our courts, and the state bar. Let me assure you that our county attorney is strong on crime and is definitely going in the right direction. There is a reason that we have been able to keep crime down in Utah County. And I key on that point because that's one of the things that the paper said that you wanted to be hard on crime. I was asked by Sheriff James Tracy to be the Field Director of the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force in two thousand twelve. Prior to this time, I served approximately eleven years in, working in gangs and drug enforcement. In two thousand thirteen, our task force took off a hundred and six pounds of heroin. Prior to this time, our task force, the most that we'd ever taken off was actually about eight pounds in one year. In two thousand fourteen, we took off a hundred and sixty-nine pounds of heroin off the streets. In two thousand fifteen, we took off a hundred and forty-five pounds. Last year, we took off two hundred and twenty pounds of methamphetamine. There is a reason why we live in one of the safest counties for our size in the state of Utah. It is because we have a functioning, working relationship with our county attorney, not hampered by a review committee. I can assure you that he is hard on crime. We do not need an advisory committee to ensure this. Jeff Buman and his staff are definitely accountable to the citizens of Utah County. We do not need this committee to determine if a case was handled appropriately and in an ethical manner. Our courts and the state bar of Utah does this very thing. The Utah State Bar is an organization of twelve thousand lawyers and judges. The Utah Legislature by statute manages and regulates this legal profession. Regulation of this profession is performed under the judicial branch of government through the Utah Supreme Court. If a case is not handled appropriately, then there are avenues for any sorts of redress, such as the bar and ultimately the citizens of Utah County. Lastly, I fear that the creation of a review committee would end up slowing down the wheels of justice. Fewer cases will be filed and I promise you that this will be a long-lasting effect on crime in Utah County. I believe you will handcuff the Utah County Attorney's Office if this committee goes forward. Opening Utah County ultimately to numerous lawsuits. We do have a system of checks and balances. We have the state bar. We have district courts, juries, appeals, acquittals, and voters of this great county. They will keep our county attorney in check. I, I'm asking you, please don't reinvent the wheel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Turley and I rise in support of any improvement. I was, um, this county's attorney office, um, uh, filed charges against me for ten felonies. It wrecked my life. Um, it took away my reputation that no money can get back to me. While I've made a petition for, uh, uh, for some restitution, um, I, I expect that there will be none. Um, yeah, even if, e- even if, uh, even if there were to be some kind of financial compensation, um, the reputation's gone. So, so I, I rise today in support of this to, to outline a few things, and these aren't anecdotes. And, and, and let me, let me say that it's insulting when, uh, when Mr. Buman got up here and said that this was proposed by a, a group of those that were anti-government, anti-law enforcement, anti-prosecution. Sir, I served, sirs, I served two terms in the Utah County, or I'm sorry, in, in, on Provo City Council. I was elected by the, the, the citizens of Provo to represent, represent them and their needs. I raised my family here. I have a company here. I've had hundreds of employees here, contributed to this economy in millions of dollars. To be called anti-government, anti-prosecution, that's not me. I, I, I simply was, uh, was falsely accused. I never had the chance to make a case for myself and I didn't need to. Because after Utah County stood up at a, at a, at a preliminary hearing, provided twenty-five witnesses, hundreds of pages of documents, we didn't get it, or the only witness that we called was Utah County's investigator. The judge himself threw it all out. And that, and that, and that level that the, 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 that the judge articulated at that time was he said, "If there's a hint of evidence, if there's a hint of evidence, Mr. Turley, that you've done anything wrong, I have to bind this over." And he didn't. There wasn't a hint of evidence. So let me just, let me just bounce down through a couple of things really quick here. The Utah County's investigator, in a, in a, in a recorded conversation that they recorded, he, uh, he said, um, "The taxpayers will continue to fund this prosecution long after Tur- after Mr. Turley's personal resources are exhausted." That should be shocking. That should shock any policymaker and anyone who executes the law or, or is in charge of the budgets of, of the city. But one of your employees is representing that to a potential witness. Another comment, um, we don't have enough evidence to convince, or to convict Mr. Turley of any of these individual instances, but if we continue to press and press and press, we might be able to convince them that Mr. Turley was in some way racketeering. Um, let me add another thing. We had, um, uh, there was, uh, witnesses that were investigated that were interviewed, I'm sorry, witnesses that were interviewed multiple times. And when we asked for their witness statements, they had none. They couldn't provide it. The investigator in this case, in my, in my anecdotal case, as it was characterized, um, used their private emails to, to communicate with potential victims and potential witnesses in this, in, in this, in, in my situation. Only that when we found out, or when we asked about them, they denied ever having them. And so we, 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 we had copies of them and we provided to them and we said, we said, "Are, are these your, your emails?" "Oh, yeah, we deleted those." Any rookie investigator knows that destruction of evidence is against the law. I'm not done. Um, the, uh, in violation of, of Utah or Utah State's, um, rules of criminal procedure, um, uh, the Utah County Attorney's Office handed out what was termed in court as voluminous information on, on my criminal prosecution. Violating not only my rights but their responsibilities. Let me tell you that, that when we first got our discovery from, from the county, the county continues to, to, to talk about, "We have an open policy, an open file. You can have anything you want." The very first time they provided us documents, they had eleven thousand documents in my case. Um, stunning. I went through every single one of those pages. Nothing was out of line, but, but nonetheless, they, they decided to conjure up ten felony charges out of that. It was only when we found it was, it was, it had massive gaps in it that we went back and asked for additional, uh, uh, information, of which they found an additional eight thousand pages of documents that they had forgot to provide us the first time. We went around and around and around on this. After five requests, they finally provided over thirty thousand pages of documents. We went to court and, and, and Utah County's prosecutor, uh, deputy prosecutor says that, um, that this was an egregious problem and represented to the judge that there was an internal audit that was going on in the Utah County Attorney's Office. We were stunned. We thought that would, that would hit the front page of the paper, that Utah County's Attorney's Office was doing an internal investigation, I'm sorry was their word. Didn't hit any, didn't hit any papers. Nobody seemed to care. And when we went back and asked for the, for the, for the findings of that, of that audit, we were brushed off and, and, and told that, uh, it was, it wasn't really a, an internal investigation. It was just, uh, some procedural corrections. The reason why I highlight those instances and the discussion about an internal investigation is that no one benefited from whatever happened there. I, I, I clearly didn't, nor did you. Nor presumably did the public in having an opportunity to understand how that office could have been run better, to have dealt with these issues here. That, that, okay, they just affected me and my family and my reputation and the impact that, that perhaps we could have had on our community. But at the end of this whole thing, I don't want your money. A, a, a claim was filed against the county and against Mr. Buman. And, and, and two weeks ago, the judge, the judge said with a real wa- wave of his hand, "There's prosecutorial immunity. He can do anything he wants to and there, and there's prosecutorial immunity." So for, for these good gentlemen and, and, and these good women that, that argued here today, "Well, the system takes care of itself." The system says there's absolute immunity. So my, my plea today is can we make this process better? Can we make this process better in some way? And you know what? That, that review board might come back and they might say, "You know what? The office needs more resources." And, and, and I don't know what they're so afraid of. If, if that review board gave you a report that said they can't afford to, to properly manage all the documents that's given to them, therefore, how can they be, how can they be held accountable to this, to this high standard that they claim they have? And that's to provide a hundred percent of the information when it immediately becomes available. They can't. And so, so if that reviewer provided you that, 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 that feedback, to me, that would be incentivizing for you guys, for you commissioners, to do something about it. I don't know why, if, if there is something better that could, that can be done out there, then we don't do it. So at the end of the day, um, I didn't get convicted. So when we talk about some of these, these conviction integrity units, I never got to that point, but the damage was done. I'm a victim. I'm a victim of a process that ran amok. And I'm simply not, you, you can't fix anything. I mean, would it have been nice at some point along the way if the county said, "Oops, we made a mistake"? They won't do that. That's that liability thing that's so worried about. But how about the next person? And Mr. Graves, this might be very, very personal and I don't intend it to be in any way derogatory. Wouldn't you like to know about everything that happened behind the scenes about an investigation? Whether past or future, i- i- into your particular circumstances? Wouldn't it be nice to know all the context that went into those decisions that were made? And I ask for all of us to consider, consider the fact, this might be an opportunity. This might be an opportunity for us to better understand how the wheels of justice turn or the wheels of injustice grind people into powder. So my hope is that, is that this thing gets the legs to get started and those wise people that you appoint, whether it's judges or attorneys or citizens, can make it better. It's an opportunity to make things better when people won't do it themselves. Thanks for your time.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing everybody to speak today despite this being tabled. Uh, my name is Carl Holland. I am a deputy county attorney with Utah County Attorney's Office. I first must apologize for coming back to commission meeting. I'm sure you thought you were rid of me for good. Um, but today's topic is of extreme importance, both to me professionally and as a citizen. And I like to express several ways that I feel that this affects the lives of all citizens in the county, not just those whose livelihood depends on this. Um, I will readily admit that I am not long for experience in the office and that most of the prosecutors in the office have probably forgotten more than I have learned. I can't provide insights from a long-earned reputation of decades of honest, hard work like Mr. Kennard. I can't and wouldn't try to replicate the heartfelt and touching remarks of Ms. Scott. However, during my time, uh, in the county attorney's office, I have learned a few things. And I should note that this is not directly. and I should note that this is not directed towards any one party. I wrote these comments last week, and so this is not a response to any person who's spoken today. But one thing I have learned that is very common for a defendant in a criminal case is for them to seek to justify or excuse or take the focus off their own bad behavior by shifting blame onto others. Uh, I had a defendant who had beaten his wife to a pulp, and he tried to shift the focus of the trial to how his wife had failed to live up to her religious morals. A woman who was driving under the influence of drugs tried to shift the focus on how mean the police officer was to her. And here, the commission is proposing a committee that would give validation through publication, uh, to these attempts to shift the blame away from the criminal and onto another party. You should note that most of the time, these accusers don't care if their claims are true. If they can cast dispersions on another party, they've succeeded in their goal of taking the spotlight off of their own bad behavior and putting it onto someone else. Now, you may say, as you've said last week, that this is not a vote of no confidence or a showing of mistrust towards the prosecutors of this county. However, uh, I've been told by a wise commissioner that the words we use in these resolutions matter very much, and this is not a defendants' rights committee. If it were, it would consider all of the defendants' rights, including the right to competent representation by public defenders, whose pay is, comes from public tax dollars that you award through a contract. This is a prosecutor misconduct committee or a prosecutor review board. The purpose of this committee is found in the title and in every portion of this resolution that Jeff pointed out to you, and that is to look for prosecutor misconduct. This is where things are most troubling, and Christine spoke very well on this subject. If a prosecutor is found by a public body to have committed misconduct, and last week there was discussion, we don't, when we say misconduct, we might not mean misconduct in the legal phrase, but we mean mistakes, then that would be a career-ruining and potentially even a life-ruining finding. I can't imagine any prosecuting agency or judicial vacancy would be open to a person who is found to have committed misconduct. But what is misconduct? It is not defined. Is it intentional or knowing wrongdoing? Is it reckless wrongdoing? Is it negligent wrongdoing? Is it something else? What wrongdoing counts? And what rights does the accused prosecutor have? Now, the committee can compel witnesses to testify, but can the prosecutor compel witnesses to testify on their behalf? Can the prosecutor testify on their own behalf? Are there any, um, is the prosecutor considered innocent of misconduct until proven guilty? Is there a right to appeal? None of this is outlined. This is worse than a pass and then learn what's in it type of legislation. This is a pass-it-and THEN-create-it resul-, uh, uh, legislation. Prosecutors accused by those attempting to shift blame and focus away from their own bad conduct would thus enjoy none of the protections that the criminal accusers enjoyed at their own trial. As written, this feels less like a committee that we should welcome as prosecutors and more like an inquisition board. But finally, I'd like to express how this proposed committee concerns me as a citizen of Utah County. So, taking the badge off for a moment, Utah County is facing enormous struggles, and no one in this room should think that they could go and sit in your seat and solve all of these problems. If they would, I would invite them, like Jeff Buman has invited you, to shadow a commissioner for twenty-four hours and realize that this is not an easy job. But the commission is failing to do things about several problems that have been brought to their attention, but this prosecutor misconduct committee is being pushed through at a rapid pace. This is a question of priority that calls into question the motivation behind the decision-making. What about the homeless issues in the county? The sheriff's, sheriff's deputies came to you with a solution last year, and nothing has been done. Despite the repeated requests by the sheriff's department and attorney's office, there's been no meeting or no movement on this issue. What about the environmental issues that were brought to your attention by the health department last year? We're pointed to multiple flagrant violations, including a property owner with a leaking container of over a thousand liters of used oil sitting on his property, and from what I know, nothing has been done on that, and it's still sitting, leaking onto this property. Nothing has been done. What about employee wages? You conducted a study last year showing that county employees, uh, had below-average wages and benefits. Some of us are underpaid to the tune of twenty-five percent below market, but nothing has been done on this. What about trampoline parks, or vape shops, or the suicide epidemic among our youth, or the opioid crisis, or the transportation issues in North and South County, or any number of dozens of other issues that citizens and interest groups and employees have approached you about countless times? Nothing is being done on any of these issues of public interest where the commission can make a real and meaningful difference within the law. Instead, this commission is committing time and resources into creating a committee that undermines our system of government, that is likely unconstitutional, that is at best duplicative of other processes that are legally created, and that the commission claims would wield no real power other than to shine light on prosecutor misconduct. And the purpose of this, uh, committee is just to investigate prosecutors that you admit have done nothing wrong in the past. I think that every citizen of this county deserves an answer as to why those problems are being ignored while this is being pushed forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to make one comment. It's amazing how many times people can read my mind or what I've been doing. The, uh, the sheriff and the homeless issue has been worked on extensively, meeting with the sheriff's department and with others, and it right now sits in a, sits in a, a position where the sheriff's department is actually bringing a proposal forward, and so, um, there, the comment that there has been no, no action on that at all is, is not accurate.
Okay, I, I apologize. I just received a text from my wife, so I need to leave, but I would like to make a couple of comments, and, and I know this gentleman still appears to be speaking about this. Um, first off, I'm, I'm ashamed. Uh, I, the more I've thought about it all week, Commissioner Ivey's comments struck in my heart. I'm ashamed to be a part of a process that attacks when he says nationally, there's this mistrust and this misconfidence. I'm ashamed that we would put something on because of a national thing rather than praising all of you good men and women that serve us, from every law enforcement agency to every person who defends the civil rights, everybody, every day. That's what this county should be about. We should be about protecting and honoring those. Do we have imperfect people? Yes. And do those people get dealt with? Yes. Uh, that, that is hard. Uh, my support for this, I did start out supportive till I learned all about it. And, uh, I want to give an accurate timeline since this is going to be tabled for a little bit. Uh, when this started, Jeff was opposed on, in, in, in theory to what it was, and then he came up with his own proposal. He then, uh, came up with an idea of a board, and he talked to a couple of people that many of us in this community respect, and I'm not going to divulge any names, but it was when I talked to this individual who then said, "I'd love to," and then a week later said, "No," going back to Ms. Scott's comments, and this person said, "No, there's no way they do it because there's no protection for them, there's no way that their name wouldn't be dragged through." There, I'm here to tell you, this thing has a lot of problems. This is somebody who I trust a lot, and a lot of people in this county trust him in a lot of ways. I, I can just tell you that. So my support for this has waned a lot since August. I've always been supportive of Jeff doing an internal review and doing whatever, uh, they want to do because that's the rule. So I'd support something being done if, if that's what Jeff wants to be done. But, uh, I hope to be somebody blowing the trumpet of the great men and women. I have loved my three years getting to know especially the sheriff's deputies. Uh, Sheriff Tracy and I have developed what I consider to be a good friendship, and I respect every one of you so much. Uh, the attorney's office, same to you. I've gotten to know all of you, although I may disagree with what Dave tells me I can and can't do and who I can meet with at times. I respect them all, and I thank you all. Uh, to the ones I don't know, thank you. I really do mean that, and I hope that we can continue to become a community where we appreciate you rather than create rules. Uh, this is not intended to be disrespectful to the ACLU of Utah, but in my life, I just never thought I would ever see the day where two Republicans align with the ACLU. It's just baffling. And it's not a bad thing. I'm not condemning, I'm just, it just is ironic to me where we've come in this society. So, anyway, I apologize that I have to leave, uh, but, uh, I have to take care of stuff at home. I apologize.
We'll continue with public comment.
Good morning. My name is Justin Gordon, and I'm here as the president of the Utah County Deputies Association. I'm also representing the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge in our area. Um, have a few comments to make. I met with Commissioner Lee. I've sent all of you a, an email with some thoughts. I just wanted to get them out there publicly. I'm not going to hit on everything that was in my, my email, but I, I'm a boots, boots-on-the-ground guy. I'm out actively working and actively sending cases to the county attorney's office. I'm also in charge of approving cases that go over to them on a, a daily basis while I'm at work. Uh, I just want you to know, as a boots-on-the-ground guy, how much I support our county attorney's office and our prosecutors. We don't agree, well, mainly on every case, we have disagreements, and then, uh, we see a lot of cases that, uh, we think there should be prosecution and, and they disagree with us. What I'm getting at is, we, we don't agree all the time. However, that's just part of the process, and we do support them ultimately because they're the ones, uh, trying the case that goes to court. Um, I want to let you know, in my fourteen years, uh, I've been to court a lot. I've been to court in our county, in Salt Lake County, in the federal system. I've seen firsthand that our prosecutors are overworked with an unmanageable caseload, and, uh, I think one thing that we need to do, uh, to make prosecution better in the county is to actually free up their hands a little bit and give them more time on cases rather than tie their hands more with, uh, more oversight. Uh, with the oversight, we feel, um, and I feel that they will decline more cases because they will, will not be willing to take on any case that may come out with a, without a win for them, and that's not how our system is set up. I see retention issues in the county attorney's office if, if this is approved. Uh, I don't want to see the loss of any of these good prosecutors that we have, and I really think that we would lose some of them, and I couldn't blame them, uh, if they were to go look elsewhere, uh, somewhere else, just in a neighboring county that didn't have more oversight. But on top of that, I think we would have an issue hiring good attorneys because they wouldn't want to come here with the extra, uh, tying of their hands when it comes to doing their job. I have a serious concern with the board members intention, uh, intentions that would be on this panel. Uh, we talked about in our meeting being seven people, and it sounds good, uh, in theory to have seven people from all these different aspects of life, you know, maybe retired judges, retired police officers, retired defense attorneys, retired prosecutors, and doing it for free. I mean, it sounds commendable. However, I've seen, in life, you get what you pay for, and if these people, you might find a few of them that can do it for a, a limited amount of time for free, maybe, you know, giving them lunch when they come and work, but, uh, if you do have some of those commendable people working for free, you're going to have, and I was told, uh, also included in the, the group of seven members are people from, you know, the national groups who you've been getting attention from when it comes to putting this in place. And my thought to that with these, these outside groups is that, uh, their boards and their national entities are going to support them financially to be on this panel on our side for free because they, they have an agenda here that they're trying to push. Uh, the last thing I want to say is just that, uh, also with the support we show for them, um, you know, we just had comments from Mr. Turley about him being in support of this panel, and, and all I can say to that is, there's already steps in place, there's already checks and balances. He's using those checks and balances. He's suing the county. He could go to the state bar and things like that. There's things already in place, a- and that's the way our system is set up. Some of the outcome of his cases, we'll never know because they were thrown out because of, um, you know, timelines, the statute of limitations. So, so there's things that will never come out in court, but there's already checks and balances in place. It's something that you've heard all day long, and, uh, we believe in those checks and balances, and we support our prosecutors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to be really brief. I'm Donna Whiting. I've been a victim advocate for American Fort for close to nine years. I just wanted to mention that it's been my experience working with victims of crime that Utah County prosecutors are extremely conscientious about filing charges. They are not frivolous. Um, I speak to many, many victims who are devastated that after, you know, we build a case and our officers and detectives work hard to get those pushed through, that they simply don't have enough evidence at the, the county level to get filed. So, um, I just wanted to, to let you guys know that that's, in my opinion, what's, um, what's happening at that level. They're, they're not frivolous, and I don't think that this committee would, would help victims of crime in any way. I worry about the, um, victimology level that they would understand, and, you know, if they would be fair. I don't think they'd be meeting the victims face-to-face, and I think that's an issue. It'd also be an issue if they were, if they were, um, required to meet the victims face-to-face because that would be another level of, um, you know, trauma for the victims. So that's just all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would, would you, would you, uh, be willing to come in and visit with me? I'd love to speak with you.
I would love to. Yes, thanks.
Good morning, good afternoon, whatever time we're at. My name is Robin Kraschinsky.
Our clock's still broke over there. Stop. I don't know.
Um, my name is Robin Kraschinsky, and I've worked for the courts for twelve years. Um, up until recently, I, uh, decided to come and join the Utah County Attorney's Office. Um, during those twelve years with the district court and the juvenile court, um, the Utah County Attorney's Office has had a great reputation. They're viewed as professional, respectful, and fair. The justice court, the juvenile court, the district court, the court of appeals, and the Utah State Bar are all set in place for those specific scenarios in which these, there are objections or complaints. After working with the courts for twelve years, I did make the very easy decision to come and work for the Utah County Attorney's Office due to their well-standing reputation. Um, I have watched them work with the public, I have watched them work with, um, very hard cases, and they have always been, uh, respectful. They, they work hard, they do a good job, they're very thorough in their investigations. They have a great standing reputation. Um, I'm just wondering why we would start and feed a fire that just isn't there? You know, I feel that this office has nothing to hide, but why would we feed a fire that just is not even there? So, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jason Randall. I work with the Utah County Sheriff's Office. Um, I supervise the special victims unit for the sheriff's office. We administer the Utah Valley Special Victims Task Force, which is comprised of civilians, advocates, uh, attorneys, and detectives from all the agencies in Utah County that do special victims crimes. Uh, my biggest concern about this is, um, and the, the attorneys can tell you, we go head-to-head with our prosecutors all the time. We bring cases to them, and it's sometimes, we, we knock heads consistently because we, of course, always want them to go forward. They have to look at things from a different view from ours. But the biggest advantage we have is, is our special victims prosecutors are phenomenal. They come to training with us. They, um, we meet on a, on a twice-a-month basis where we sit down and talk about cases, um, especially in the, in the realm of internet crimes against children, um, internet crimes regarding all sex offenses. Uh, for me, it takes one of our detectives two to three years just to get up to speed. It takes our prosecutors two to three years to really get up to speed to understand what they're doing. How in the world is a civilian commission put together that doesn't go through this training, that really has no background or basis in these type of offenses, going to be able to sit in judgment over what a prosecutor is doing? And these cases are hard enough to prosecute. When it takes my detectives and, and the attorneys in this unit this much time just to get up to speed, and we're constantly doing training, we're constantly having to stay abreast of what's going on because internet crimes against children specifically, they're changing so much, the technology's changing. What we can prosecute, what we've been able to do now versus five years ago has changed. So my biggest... So my biggest concern, as a supervisor over the special victims unit, is any type of restraint or concerns that these prosecutors have that is going to make them less willing to go forward on some of these cases where all we have is a he-said, she-said, which a lot of our child victim crimes are. At the end, this is going to hurt the victims, and it's going to result in fewer prosecutions because that timidity, that it can't be there. We work hand-in-hand with our prosecutors because we are on the same team, and so that's the main concern I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's talk.
Ben Stanley, I'm an attorney in Lehigh and live in Pleasant Grove. I spoke last week, so I won't take much of your time today, commissioners, but I stand again because I want to go on record as an advocate and a champion for law enforcement, someone who believes very strongly in the role of government. I've been an officer of the courts all of my professional career, and yet I believe in this proposal and this recommendation that we have some greater oversight, some greater review. I commend your courage and your integrity to stand for doing the very best that you can in your jobs to make sure that crimes and injustices are not occurring within the structure of government itself. I perceive today something of a concerted effort to suggest that there's no problem and so there shouldn't be review, and perhaps some mischaracterizations of what that review would entail. I don't think there ought to be review of day-to-day decisions, of prosecutorial decisions that are discretionary or reasonable minds might differ. I've heard a lot about mistakes, and mistakes concern me, but they don't concern me nearly so much as misconduct does. I don't think there should be a commission to reevaluate the commissioners of the county's decisions on issues, but I do think there should be someone or some group that are prosecuting commissioners of our county if they are committing crimes, or if they're engaged in misconduct that violates our constitution and that is morally reprehensible. And in the same regard, I think there should be oversight and review and analysis of whether or not misconduct is occurring when there's opportunities for the very people engaged in that misconduct to obfuscate or conceal the misconduct evidence. There's talk about how sterling the reputation of the county attorney's office is, often from people who work in this building and have the ability to come easily and defend their position. Let me tell you that for years I have been concerned about issues in this county attorney's office. As an advocate of law enforcement, as a fan of justice, as an advocate for liberty and justice principles across the nation, I have watched and had people come to me and present quite the compelling case that there's not a great reputation in the Utah County Attorney's Office. In fact, Kent Hart was one of the motivators for me to get involved in trying to see some change and some reform in our county attorney's office. And his position, he brought me dozens of cases and said, "Here are very specific concerns I have, Mr. Stanley, I think they need to be addressed." I have gone down personally to the county attorney's office to make the case that there are very specific examples of misconduct that should be addressed, and I felt ambushed, and I felt attacked, and a defensive approach that didn't give me the chance to actually really be heard, and all I wanted was to see some internal controls and some internal review that didn't occur when I made that effort. Now, he's passed away, he's no longer with us, so it's unfortunate because I think he would stand with others who have advocated for this kind of oversight, but let me say very plainly and very clearly for the record that I have personally witnessed conduct that I think is morally reprehensible, that is unethical, that troubles me. And so, I believe that there is value that anyone of integrity, anyone of character ought to welcome and embrace scrutiny and sunlight. Scrutiny and sunlight are the allies of those that want to do right. And when you have cases like what happened to Roger and Pam Mortensen, for example, where statements that were true and perceptions were twisted and painted as inconsistent somehow, you see tremendous miscarriages of justice. I spoke years ago to the county convention of the Republican Party with a quote from Martin Luther King Jr. who said, "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." I hope those words mean something and resonate with us, and I, again, commend your courage to stand and tackle a tricky issue and to find the best way to do it, and I recommend that you continue to search for the very best way to do it, but I directly refute those who would claim that there is not a need for more checks and balances, and that I believe that there is a way to do it that would pass constitutional muster, that would serve the men and women of our county, that would serve those who are your constituents, who look to you for leadership and guidance, and hope that there is a process in place to make sure that there's integrity within our county government and that the things that happen here are what should happen for the sake of all those that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm getting a bunch of texts all at once, so I apologize for the vibrating phone. I wasn't going to get a stand-up here today. My name's Eric Canuson, by the way, I work here at the sheriff's office, I'm lieutenant over the investigations division. I wanted to address a few points, simply because I know that some of the cases have been referred to, I've been part of, and have been with the county for a number of years, and so I wanted to just make mention, first of all, a quote that was mentioned last week, and it was always also mentioned today. The quote is, "It seems to me that you're looking for a solution for a problem that doesn't exist." Keep that in mind, I'm going to mention it again at the end of this statement. As I mentioned, I'm lieutenant over the investigations division, so part of my responsibility is also the Utah Valley Special Victims Task Force. So I'm involved with several of the cases they work with, we work closely with the prosecutors, and what's been touched on by many is an important fact that deals with sexual assault to children, sexual assault to adults, and child abuse and things like that. Part of our team are prosecutors, we need those prosecutors, we need those prosecutors to be aggressive and take on these cases without one more added fear from a panel that really isn't going to be beneficial whatsoever. There's a phrase that is often used in the Special Victims Task Force, and that phrase is, "Start by believing." We, as investigators, do that. We start by believing when people come in and explain to us what happened, what they're a victim of. We always do that. But as investigators, we have to go beyond that. This was brought up by some prosecutors here recently, who said, "You can't ignore facts." We understand that people are hurt and victims, but you still can't ignore facts. Our job as investigators is to investigate those facts, to find out what really happened. We're required to do that, the prosecutors are required to do that, we have to seek the truth and find out exactly what took place. In almost every case, we, as law enforcement officers, we become emotionally connected to the victim. We develop an emotional connection to the case, however, we still remember that the evidence and the facts are what's important about our case. It's important for the prosecution, and it's critical that we understand what took place. Without understanding the facts, it's not beneficial, it could be damaging to all parties, both the victim and the defendant in the case. One thing that becomes important, as, you know, I listened to Mr. Turley speak, and also Mr. Stanley speak, we talk about emotions, emotions and feelings. Emotions and feelings are wonderful, we experience those all the time. You know, our brain is in a constant battle with each other, our left brain, the logical brain, is kind of telling us, this is the logical part of it, and you have the emotional side of your brain, that's telling us the emotional part, what our heart tells us to do. And we struggle with that every day. You, as a panel of commissioners, are going to struggle with the same thing when it comes to making the decision for this panel that you proposed. Is it an emotional decision, or is it based on fact? And I hope you guys understand, as you make this decision, as you listen to other people talk, are they basing their information on emotions, or are they basing them on facts? One thing to remember, as you think about this, emotions and feelings, they're not facts, okay? They aren't always factual in nature. And please pay attention, as you guys, again, put this panel or vote on this panel, what is factual, what's not. I had several questions to pose to you guys, but I'm not going to cover those because they've already been covered, but one I will cover with you is simply to say, is there something in the state of Utah that covers misconduct by prosecution? I know we've addressed it already, but is there? You can ask yourself that question, are there checks and balances in place already? We know that, it's been mentioned before, for prosecutors, is the state bar and the programs or the panels and committees and commissions they have already in place to discipline and potentially prosecute prosecutors. Christine covered it very clearly in her statements about not following through with due process with a committee that you're planning on putting together. Last, I want to add to you, any misconduct on the part of any prosecution, or the team of prosecutors, or the team they work with specifically related to Special Victims Task Force, where I work with, and the investigators that I work with, is wrong, it needs to be prosecuted, there certainly needs to be investigating and looked into. My question to you, is that happening? Is it happening in Utah County? Do you have facts to back that up? You've been given samples of possible misconduct or allegations of misconduct, but are they factual? Have you looked into that? In your decision-making process, look into finding out if they're factual. Find out, did it really happen? I think you'll find that it doesn't exist here in Utah County. Could it? Absolutely. When that happens, do we look at it? Absolutely. But we let the things that are in processes that are in place take action and go after those people that are perhaps acting with misconduct. I'll go back to what Commissioner Graves had said before, "It seems that you're looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist." I will simply add, you're looking for a solution that already exists. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jared Perkins, and I've worked with the county attorney's office for about 10 years now. And I hope you'll forgive my thoughts if they're discombobulated, I wasn't planning on speaking today, and if they're redundant, I hope you forgive that as well. I was reviewing a subpoena upstairs at the beginning of the comments, and so I didn't hear everything that was said earlier. I just want to make sure that I leave you with the impression that we welcome oversight, we're not afraid of oversight, and I wanted to describe some of the oversight that we already endure. Mr. Buman is elected by the citizens of the county, that's the ultimate oversight of our constitutional system, oversight by the people. Each individual prosecutor has the oversight of his own conscience, we're trained over and over again repeatedly that we're not just normal attorneys who are out to win or out to make a score points in court, make a name for ourselves, that we're ministers of justice, that our job is to find the truth of any matter and make sure that the truth of that matter is pursued to a point of a just result in court. The Roger and Pam Mortensen case has been brought up as an example of why we need this oversight. It's my opinion that the personal conscience of zealous and careful prosecutors, the Mortensen case is an example of where pursuing that, in a way, as ministers of justice, the ultimate mistake was discovered, the Mortensens were not convicted, and the perpetrators were found and prosecuted successfully. We have judicial oversight, the preliminary hearing, that's, Mr. Turley's case is an example of that. Obviously, the prosecutors on that case disagreed with Mr. Turley's position, that's why we have a litigation in the court. The judicial oversight that we have, if there was an injustice done in Mr. Turley's case, as he claims there was, the judicial oversight was exercised properly and his case was dismissed. We have the fact-finding oversight of juries, we have the fact-finding, or excuse me, we have the appellate oversight of appellate courts, and then the ultimate appellate courts of the Supreme Courts of both the state of Utah and the United States. The bar has been mentioned as overseeing our own personal licenses. Each stage, in each stage of these oversights, everything that we as prosecutors do, everything that the police officers have done, everything that witnesses have said, is checked again and again and again and again and again. So we welcome oversight. It exists, it exists in the constitutional structure that has been provided to us. Where we don't welcome oversight is where it is both politically motivated and can be used as a sword, and where it is redundant and duplicative of things that we already have in place. That's all, all my thoughts, thanks.
Thank you. Any additional?
I don't want to repeat a lot of things that were said, but one of the questions that I did have that I really never got an answer to, and maybe I haven't asked the right question, and it was kind of brought up today, is that I'm assuming, Commissioner Lee, that you wrote this resolution?
I put it together, yes.
Can I ask who assisted you in crafting this resolution?
I had multiple groups that helped me in this, from just private individuals to organizations that were out there, and it goes back to comments even from the prior, when we had talked. And I did talk with some law enforcement as well, and as you're probably well aware, it would probably be very hard to have our own lawyers in the county help to craft this because of the nature of what's going on.
Sure, sure, and I was just looking for any particular names associated with groups that you might have worked with on this.
Names of individuals?
Or groups?
Well, like I said, I worked, well, the ACLU was one that sent me, they sent me a letter. The national organization criminal, the one, what's it called, CPI, I can't remember their names. Libertas did put some context in there, and then lots of just individuals. There were some defense attorneys that had called on a repeated basis to talk with me about their issues. Like I mentioned, there was the one that has been out there all along, and why I'm asking for prosecutors to come and talk with me now, it was silent. I had, no one came forward on that one, on that side.
Okay, so, and that was, and I'm not intending to put you on the spot or anything, but I just want you to know, or at least to be worn out, that we want to work with you, we want to give you our input, and I believe that in this beginning process, I pulled every single appellate court case where there's ever been an alleged or an allegation of misconduct by a Utah County prosecutor, and I gave you all those cases and I sent those to you, and so I did try to reach out and stuff, and maybe we can improve the way that we talk and stuff like that. I know that Mr. Stanley mentioned Kent Hart, he was the president of the Utah Criminals Defense Lawyers Association, and he did pass away, but before he passed away, he came, he was given a list of certain cases that he was concerned about. We invited him to our office, and he came to our office, and so he gave us a list of those cases, and so what we did is we brought every single prosecutor who had prosecuted those cases so that he could get insight as to maybe if he had questions. And when he came, he respectfully declined to go into any of those cases with us, he said he's just too overwhelming and stuff like that, but I just want you to know that we do reach out when we do hear that there has been concern and stuff like that, we have taken steps to at least try to reach out to individuals. The only thing that I really want to say today is that, quite honestly, having been on a city council for six years, and having to make a lot of decisions that came in front of the city council, I kind of know that I'm not going to change anyone's mind today, and I'm not asking, because that's, if you've looked at it, your mind's probably made up, and that's not my purpose.
That's not true.
But I just, okay, and you know what?
Conversation's important.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I appreciate that. But one of the things that I will tell you is that if this passes, that I would be negligent. If I went back to my prosecutors and said, "You know what, there's, everything's the same, business as usual," because it won't be. Because of that absolute immunity that comes with prosecutors, which this resolution says it creates obstacles and barriers, I will go back to my prosecutors and I will tell them, unless you have a confession, or unless you have physical evidence or something that is so profound that all these sex cases that these officers talked about today and worked so diligently and hard, we will probably decline those cases, because we cannot, and I would be negligent if I told my prosecutors to go ahead and make those tough decisions and leave them open to some sort of scrutiny by some group of individual where we don't even know what misconduct may be defined as. We do make those tough decisions, and we make those tough decisions because we know that at the end of the day, that the courts have said, "You know what, we want you to make those tough decisions for the safety of your community." And if this passes, things will change in our office, they have to change in our office because we have to look out for those prosecutors and doing an end run around what courts, what judges, what so many different entities have said, "You know what?" you know what, we grant this to the prosecutors. Things will have to change in our office. And I think that you know that. And I think that you understand that, that things won't be the same. I really do hope that we continue the conversation. I think that what Mr. Buman proposed, maybe it's not the best in your opinion, but you know what? At least we've got this conversation going and I hope that we continue to move forward. And we give a little bit, you give a little bit, and at, at the end of the day, we reach a resolution that, you know what, maybe we can both live with, and I appreciate that.
You know, it's interesting because it, I think, I can't remember who said it, but somebody said that all these cases are, are open to the commissioners. We can come and look at them and, and, and none of us have found prosecutorial misconduct. I think somebody said, somebody stated that. I for one, would never think that I was qualified enough to, to be able to make that determination. I, I wouldn't be able to look through cases and say, oh, well, there it is, or there it's not. And so even though they're shown to us or we have the opportunity to look down through it and have conversation, I appreciate the opportunity and the conversations that we've had in the past when we have questions.
Sure.
But they never really center around the misconduct, which I think is a super high bar. You know, to, to do that, there's got to be some intent there that is over and above what is in your code of conduct. And so when, as, as representatives of the people and as people come forward and they start hitting us with these, with issues, we're naturally going to listen as their representatives.
Sure.
And we're going to say, well, what's going on? And we start asking questions. And as we ask questions, this is just a process that I personally go through and I'm sure Commissioner Ivey does as well. I go through that and start asking the questions. What's going on? How come this is happening? Not that I am the knowledge or the, the person that has the foremost knowledge in the issue. And that's, that's the reason why conversation is so important. And as more and more keep coming and keep asking questions, then it starts to formulate into ideas of, okay, well, what can be done? What should we do? That's the reason why it came up last year as a possibility for conversation. Now, we did have a lot of conversation and they bounced back and forth and there was some disagreement on there and it finally got to the point to where, you know, it was like, this is just not, it's not going to work. The proposal we came to just didn't quite work because of restrictions. And, and then, I mean, it was alleged here that we just kind of, oh, well, we're hoping that it just goes away. The people are still talking and they're still asking those questions. And I, again, I would invite, I mean, there's a lot of things that I'm trying to write down that are said here that I never, this is the first time I've heard it. I would love to have that conversation.
Thank you.
To see where it's at.
Thank you.
There are some, there are some things that have been said here in which I look at and think, wait a second, that has nothing to do with, I think, the intent. It has a lot of, I think, emotion attached to it. There's a lot of ifs and what-ifs there. But again, let's have these conversations. That's the reason why when I saw Jeff put this on, I, I was actually happy to see it on there.
Great.
Because it gives us the opportunity to have that conversation. So let's continue in these conversations and find, like what you said is, you know, something that maybe we can go back and forth and find something that works.
Thank you, thank you. And I want you to know that my door is always open with regards to if you have one of your constituents approach you and has some concern. Commissioner Graves, someone contacted him about a particular case. And he came and talked to me, he related to me the facts that he was given. When I showed him the information that was somewhat different than the facts he was given, then I think that helped clarify some things. And so that same invitation is open to, to both of you at, at all times, always.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Ponositake County Attorney's Office. I'm not a prosecutor, so my comments aren't going to discuss that. I work in the Civil Division. Before I came to the county, I did civil litigation. And my focus in my study during law school and my, in my time after was also focused on civil litigation. What we have today is, is something interesting, some issues that I just heard now. One, that you had some other people give you legal advice on how to construct something like this when the county attorney's offices should be having legal review and input on, on a resolution on something like this. Something that concerns me additionally is if this were actually created, one of our attorneys from our office would have to be appointed to oversee that board. And if the time came that they had to issue a subpoena to the Utah County Attorney's Office, a Utah, deputy Utah County Attorney would have to issue a subpoena to itself, to its own office. I mean, there's just so many different issues here that, that this, the creation of this board will create. And an additional issue is this, is that if this commission, the county commissioners, you create this by resolution, it will be in fact, a public body. And if it's a public body, it's open to, it's, it's subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. And if it's subject to Open Public Meetings Act, I don't know how there can be anything meaningfully done with a current case or a case that could be pending an appeal or that is still, you know, that could happen at, at the Court of Appeals and could come back for a mistrial or, or a retrial. There's, there's just so many issues. And so in my mind, there can't be any way for the commissioners to create this board. It's got to come through Jeff's office. It's got to be subject to him and his appointment as a county attorney. That's, that's the only way I can see it done in my eyes without subjecting the county to frivolous lawsuits between itself and exposing us to additional liability. That's, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's why it was done after, not during.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Adam Palmero. I'm a deputy Utah County Attorney here under Mr. Buman. My colleagues have spoken eloquently about many issues arising out of this prosecutorial review board. I wish to add a slightly different perspective. Prior to my employment here at the county, I was a criminal defense attorney for nearly three years. Prior to that, I was a civil rights attorney practicing constitutional law at a public interest firm in California. I've had the opportunity to see many prosecutors in many roles. I've had the opportunity here in Utah to practice before most judges in most courts in this state. And I can tell you without a doubt that the prosecutors in this office are some of the most hard-working ethical professionals I've ever seen. I have the experience to say perhaps where I see some issues in the state. Those issues are not present in Utah County. Those issues are not ones that I have seen under Mr. Buman's tenure. I have not seen under Mr. Taylor or any of my other supervisors. I have not seen them from any of the prosecutors with whom I work. And I can tell you without a doubt that I would not have taken this position at this office if I was concerned about prosecutorial misconduct. I very firmly believe in our civil rights, very firmly believe in a process that affords defendants who by and large are guilty of the crimes, the process to go through to make sure that we ethically convict them of crimes, that we ethically treat them in this process. I believe this prosecutorial, prosecutorial review board as currently contemplated is a solution in search of a problem. We are letting the tail wagged dog under these circumstances. I'm not saying there isn't issues to work through. I'm not saying that oversight is not a good thing. Sunshine is wonderful to be cast down upon us. This is good. What I'm saying is we need to pull back on the reins here, slow down and think about all the consequences of what we're doing. The board as currently constituted, I believe, would be problematic for many of the regards expressed by, by my colleagues. I believe there are several ways forward that we could have productive conversations that we've spoken about. One example, I think it would be a good idea if we had the opportunity to have outside experts review our internal policies, make sure we're following best practices. For example, our office has instituted an open file policy that's been in place for some time. This is what's recommended by prosecutorial and defense associations across the nation as the thing we should be doing. But the reason we're doing that is because we have good leadership. We have leadership who does not want ethical problems. We have leadership who does not have ethical problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Morning, my name's Lance Bastian and because I think the deputy Utah County attorneys have been underrepresented today, I'm going to also add a few remarks.
This is good, we're getting to know all of you in one meeting.
That's right. And I, I was also late for the meeting. I was in court this morning and I, so I didn't hear everything that's been said. So I apologize as well if I repeat anything and I hadn't intended to speak. But I just wanted to add a couple of things. Commissioner Lee, a minute ago said that, I think you said, as you've been hearing comments from people and, and people bringing this issue to your attention, that you asked yourself, you know, why is this happening? What, what, what's going on here? But I think you missed the first question that should have been asked and, and that's, is this happening in Utah County? And a lot of people have spoken today to address that. Maybe there is a nationwide problem of prosecutors going beyond what they should be doing. But my experience, I've been with this office for about six years. I've, I've prosecuted, I guess if Mr. Kennard's statistics are correct, a couple of thousand cases. I've done some twenty-odd jury trials. I've had the kind of unique opportunity as a state prosecutor to argue in front of our Supreme Court a couple of times. And like everyone from my office who has spoken, my experience in this office has been nothing but being impressed with the, with the way everyone I come in contact with, everyone I work with, puts ethics and genuinely seeking justice above any other concerns. We have an incredibly difficult job. I also work in our special victims unit right now. And we deal with impossible issues. I remember in law school thinking that once I become an attorney and once I'm dealing with cases, that there's going to be a right answer. There's going to be a solution to every case. There's going to be something that if both sides can just put their heads together and really be open to, to, to coming together, that there's always going to be something where everybody wins. And it's just not true. Our system, though imperfect, is the best system there is. But it fails people. Arguably, it failed Mr. Turley. And it fails defendants sometimes. It fails people who get accused of crimes they didn't commit. Because law enforcement officers, as they investigate crimes, don't always know the truth and people lie. We as, as prosecutors don't always know the truth and people get up and give false testimony. We do our very best to get to the truth of a matter, but we don't always do that. And that's what our system, that's how it works. It's an adversarial system. We represent one side, somebody else represents the other. Hopefully, everyone's interests are represented, but we fail sometimes. But that's the thing, not only do we fail defendants sometimes, not only do we accuse people of crimes they didn't commit, and not only are people's reputations damaged by that, but we fail people on the other side too. We fail so many victims of crimes, whether it be because it's a he said, she said, and we simply don't have enough evidence to feel like we can go forward on a rape allegation or a child sex abuse allegation or something else like that, that by, by its nature, a lot of times doesn't have a whole lot of, of evidence. So we don't even bring the case and that person gets revictimized. Or we do bring a case and we fight and we fight hard and we go to trial on it and somebody gets acquitted, not necessarily because they're innocent, but because we couldn't prove that they were guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. And not only does that person get revictimized by the acquittal, but by that entire process of, as has been discussed, of having to get up and talk about the, the most devastating thing that's ever happened in their life, oftentimes multiple times, right in front of the person who's sitting there smiling at them as they do so, who victimized them, who abused them, who did whatever they did to them. There are so many ways in which people get victimized and are wronged by our criminal justice system on both sides. But that doesn't mean misconduct. That doesn't mean anybody has done anything wrong or that anybody has abused their power. The gentleman from the ACLU talked about the fact that the prosecution has all the power in this situation. And in, in a way, that's kind of true. I mean, I guess the analogy that I've been sitting here thinking about as, as I've been mulling this over is if you think about, you know, a really big, strong guy, right? The world's strongest man competition kind of guy who's standing there and he's about to, to engage in some competition against like a six-year-old kid. But the difference is, and they're, and they're going to have a race or something, but the difference is that that guy is dragging behind him a sled that has a thousand-pound piece of granite on it and that kid is dragging nothing. That's how our criminal justice system works. We have all the power, but we also have all the burden. And if we, and, and we've talked about scrutiny. We've talked about oversight. We've talked about the fact that we have the district courts and we have the appellate courts. But I want to talk to you for a second about what that really looks like. Because everybody's kind of talked about it in generalities, but I want to give you the sort of boots on the ground, what that actually, how that actually manifests itself. In a case where we have, like Mr. Turley's case, thirty thousand pages of discovery. A couple of years ago, our office went paperless. The, all the law enforcement offices in the county are in various stages of going paperless. And we're trying to get discovery from them to us and from us to the defense. Sometimes that process where some things are electronic and some things are paper and some things are who knows what or who knows where or in the possession of who knows who. I, as a prosecutor, am held responsible to know about the existence and provide to the defense every piece of evidence that exists in a case, whether I have any knowledge of it or not, whether it's sitting in some warehouse at some police agency and they haven't told me about it and I don't know about it and I've been provided a whole bunch of stuff and they tell me that's everything, but they don't know if it's everything and I don't know if it's everything. But a court is going to look at me and I'm going to stand up there and they're going to say, Mr. Bastian, you are personally responsible for every piece of evidence in this case. And if anything wasn't provided to the defense, that's on you. You're presumed to have known about it and you're presumed to have not disclosed it essentially on purpose. That's what that looks like. That's what courts say to us. We get up and make arguments. Sometimes we argue for an hour in closing argument at the end of a jury trial. And we have had cases literally overturned on appeal because a prosecutor was too sarcastic in their closing argument. That is the standard to which we as prosecutors are held. Quite frankly, a defense attorney can say anything they want. And unless we are willing to move for a mistrial and undue days, weeks, months of testimony and of people coming in and pouring their hearts out, of that entire process, unless we're willing to say, after we've been going at this for three weeks, that I'm going to move for a mistrial because the defense attorney just said something that the jury shouldn't have heard, then we let it go. But a court is never going to hold that defense attorney responsible for what he or she said. But you better believe that if I say something that's out of line, one, they will move for that mistrial. And if it's not granted, that the Court of Appeals is going to say, too sarcastic in a closing argument, too sarcastic, we're going to, we're going to remand that down for another trial. Much has been said today about this being a, a, a solution without a problem. And, and I'm a little concerned, quite frankly, Commissioner Lee. I think it was when you were talking to Tim or at some point when you were talking to somebody during this meeting that you said, you know, nobody from the county attorney's office has come and spoken to you. But have you come and spoken to us? You haven't ever knocked on my door to ask me what it's like to prosecute cases and if, if there are ways that we can improve what's going on in our office. To my understanding, you haven't knocked on Mr. Kennard's door or Ms. Scott's door or Mr. Holland's door or any of those people's doors to say, you know what? Some people have brought some cases to my attention that I'm concerned about. The Mortensen case, the Turley case, be it whatever case it may. And I'm concerned that maybe there was some prosecutorial misconduct. And you talked about the fact that you're not an expert. But nobody's asking you to determine if there was effective assistance of counsel or anything, any particular legal thing. You're a qualified individual to say if somebody purposefully misconducted themselves. And we're not asking you to say, oh, did they follow the law? Did they do this to the, we're asking you to say, did they do something dishonest? And you can do that. So if somebody brings a case to your attention, instead of just quietly going to the ACLU or to Libertas and saying, let's put together this board that's incredibly ill-defined and hastily rushed together for some reason, maybe go to the office of that prosecutor who prosecuted that case and say, hey, these concerns have been brought to my attention. Can I talk to you about it? Here's the issue, what's your side of the story? I'm not sure why the onus is on us to come to you with this issue when you're the ones putting it together and you at any time could have gone and talked to anyone in our office about what they've done on a particular case, about their experience in general, about what's going on. I think that's where the burden lies. I think in this particular case, the burden's on you to justify what you're trying to do, not, not on us to try and justify ourselves when we've been accused by a handful of people who feel they've been wronged. And quite frankly, when you do a job like this, if you don't make a couple enemies along, along the way, then you're probably not doing your job correctly. People who get convicted of crimes, whether they did them or not, don't tend to appreciate that very much. And there are plenty of people in this county who don't appreciate the fact that they've been charged, that they've been convicted, even if they're guilty. Most of them, I would hope that the vast majority of them are. But I, I acknowledge that I'm sure we have convicted some innocent people. But it's not because anybody's trying to do that. We have nothing to gain by that. It breaks our hearts to do that. And I'll end with this. I, a couple of weeks ago, I told you I'm in special victims. And I'll end with this, I, a couple of weeks ago, I told you I'm in special victims, I had a a case that I had been agonizing over. I'd been screening it for several weeks. I'd sent my investigator back out, I mean, they had done the initial investigation, they'd sent it to me to screen it. I had sent him back out to follow up on as many leads as he possibly could, but the allegation here was was sexual abuse of a child that had happened about ten years ago. And I watched the recorded interviews of the alleged victim and of the defendant or the suspect at that time. And I was incredibly torn. I found the alleged victim to be absolutely credible. I felt like he absolutely believed that this happened to him. For that reason, I brought him in and I had him go through in person, sit down across the table from me and tell me his entire story front to back to try to gauge his credibility, to try to decide if I thought this happened, because unfortunately, because of how long ago it had happened, there was no corroborating evidence. Nobody remembered any of the circumstances, nobody remembered anything that was going on, it was just his word against against hers. And ultimately, I determined to decline that case. Because although I firmly believe that he believed it happened and I think there's a very, very strong chance that it did happen, I did not feel like I had enough evidence to to ethically move forward. And I brought him into my office because I felt like I owed him, sitting down face to face and telling him that I had decided not not to prosecute his case. And he proceeded to to scream at me for several minutes. He called me a liar, he called me, he he said I was a coward. He said there was blood on my hands, that I was as complicit as pilot because I had chosen not to prosecute his case. And then he got up and he told me to go to hell and he walked out of my office. That was a difficult thing, it was it was hard to let that case go because it probab- i- i- it may have happened. I don't know. But nobody that I know in this office is in this to try to railroad somebody who didn't do something. And even when we believe something happened, if we don't feel like we can meet our ethical obligations to bring a case forward, we don't. And we're faced with those nigh unto impossible decisions every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I come to your office or do you like to come to mine? I'll come to yours.
I'll be.
Okay.
Dan Thomas, Utah County. Uh, good morning to you, good afternoon now. Uh, I'll keep things very long today, kind of longer explanation. Um, I'm just kidding, we'll just keep it short. I'm definitely against the board, so. Remember, the scope of county government is to deal with county problems. That's all.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Craig Johnson, Utah County Attorney's Office. I've been prosecuting our office about ten years. Um, I have two examples of the the chilling effect that this would have on me personally and how I prosecute cases. Uh, we've heard a lot of good representations from our office uh, that I'm not gonna rehash, I think they're all well taken, I think the Commissioners have a good, good way to start on that. Um, uh, this morning at at nine AM, uh, when this meeting started, I had a previous engagement that I canceled uh, because it was important enough for me to be at this meeting. I was supposed to be meeting with an officer at the Orem Police Department, coming off of a graveyard shift. He was invested enough about this case that I was assigned in January. A gentleman, uh, drove up from Arizona where he'd been separated and estranged from his wife up in Orem, came up for some visitation issues, uh, saw her speaking with another man, a neighbor, got upset, uh, strangled her and threatened to kill her. She survived thankfully, this all happened in front of her three-year-old daughter. Um, got the case, filed aggravated assault charges. And, uh, very shortly after we filed charges, we got a notice from, uh, her attorney, the the wife, the victim's attorney, who she had gone out and got got representation and had, uh, asserted her, uh, marital privilege. Says, I'm not gonna testify against my husband, dismiss the case. Um, if this board were to be created, uh, that's plenty of of CYA for me to say, okay, the defendant doesn't want this case, obviously, the victim does not want this case, obviously. Um, what what sense is it to go forward here? And, uh, hopefully to avoid a complaint to this commission. Cause assuredly, if I go forward with the case, the victim's gonna complain to the commission and, uh, the defendant for prosecuting and forcing his wife to testify or whatever. And so, since that commission is not in existence as of today and as of last week, I set up a meeting with this officer from Orem. He coordinated with the dispatcher to get the nine-one-one call. Uh, I'm gonna subpoena that nine-one-one dispatcher to a preliminary hearing in the next week or so, taking her out of her busy schedule, which I'm sure she, uh, even though she's doing her duty, I'm sure she'd rather not be coming into court to wait for a couple hours for a preliminary hearing. Um, I've got the the wife, the victim, she's subpoenaed to come and assert her marital privilege on the record, to assert that she is not being threatened in any way. So I can then go into show the nine-one-one call that has has her explain this threat to her and her life to, uh, show the body cams from the officers who did their due diligence in 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 capturing this, uh, frightened situation where she could've been killed. Um, and I'm gonna go through, using the rules of evidence, the way I know them, way I've been trained through the special victims unit training in the past, to hold this gentleman accountable, so that he won't do this to someone else again. Or at least there'll be a record that someone can look back on before getting in a relationship with him perhaps, to say, hey, this is not someone I need to be with. Um, this, again, this all happened in front of the three-year-old daughter. So I'm also out there speaking for her, for her, uh, the, she doesn't have a voice in this. Hopefully someday she can look back and say, hey, someone, uh, my mom wasn't able to stand up for herself because of, you know, the cycle of domestic violence, and I'm glad a prosecutor did. Uh, again, this is a case that was, no one's banging down my door to prosecute this. Um, but I'm reaching out and being proactive to try to protect society here, and this is not a case I would pursue uh, if this board were, or this commission were to be approved. Uh, similarly, I had a case, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, out of Highland involving, uh, two sisters that were molested by their uncle. Went to trial on it, based on a he said, she said. Again, these things happen usually and and, uh, without witnesses. And that was the case here. Uh, went to trial and, uh, the jury convicted him of, uh, molesting one of the sisters, but not the other, uh, the ten-year-old, but not the twelve-year-old. Um, unbeknownst to me, um, the morning of closing arguments, my case officer took the elevator up with two of the jurors and a fourth person who happened to be a relative of the defendant. He made an innocuous comment about the color of their shirts, how it was different from the day before. And as a result of that, despite the conviction on a mandatory minimum, uh, fifteen year to life aggravated sexual abuse of a child, the jud- the fourth district court judge who heard the case decided that that was problematic enough that my officer, just the the appearance of impropriety, that, um, she undid that trial and granted a motion for a new trial. So now I have this ten-year-old girl who's now fifteen at trial, now a year later sixteen, having to explain to her that, hey, no fault of your own, you need to testify about this stuff again. Um, again, this is a a one-time touching case. And, um, with a with a oversight committee, like is being proposed. Um, now, why would I take a case like that to trial, knowing that it's it's a he said, she said situation? And assuredly, the defendant, his attorneys would be filing something, should he be convicted, with this oversight committee. Um, but due to her courageousness, this, uh, now seventeen-year-old, when we go to trial, we went to trial again last fall, uh, she testified again about this one-time touching, the fact that she went five years without disclosing to anyone. And people on the streets can say, wow, well, why, you know, how how in the world could that have happened? But we have good victimology experts, people who are in the trenches, who see these things and explain to the jury that this is not uncommon. And, uh, ultimately, the jury convicted him a second time. And now he's serving fifteen years to life at the Utah State Prison on a case that I would not have gone forward first or the second time to trial without this, uh, if this committee was, uh, enforced. So I'd ask that you take this, uh, I know you take this seriously, but, uh, those are two examples of how my prosecution would be different if this were in effect.
Matt, can I ask you a question?
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
Um, cause you've you've, uh, touched on this a lot more than others and it's come up over and over, that there would be times in which, uh, you know, in those cases that you're siding there, that you would actually not go forward because this this, uh, review uh, board was in place. I'm having a hard time understanding that if if you're, um, if you're within the bounds and doing what you're supposed to be doing as a prosecutor, w- why would a review board thwart that?
Well, trying to get in the mind of this potential review board is is certainly a sticky situation, but I I guess I would say looking at, um, from an outsider's perspective, I mean, you yourself said you'd have a hard time defining misconduct.
Right.
So it's it's a wide spectrum on on how other people would interpret this. In my experience, talking with jurors and hearing, you know, I, like Mr. Kennard, I've done over fifty felony jury trials. I've spoken to, uh, many jurors as a result of that. I've also sat through many defense attorney closing arguments as a result of that. And have heard their comments saying, you know, where's where's her primary teacher? Why aren't they here to testify? Where's her neighbor? Why aren't they here to testify about her not telling them or disclosing or not disclosing? Um, how many opportunities did she have during those five years to tell someone about the abuse and she didn't? But the state hasn't brought those people here. And that's something that I feel could be construed by this this hypothetical commission to say, you know what? There needs to be more done here, you can't just take a case.
Is that outside of prosecutor's normal process?
No, no, I mean, this is something that we're trained to do, to try to track down, uh, witnesses of disclosures, things like that. But despite that, we still get harangued by defense counsel in court and make it seem like we're doing something wrong. And I can see i- if they're trying to sell that bill of goods to eight people of a jury who are just off the streets without professional experience, I I can see a similar argument being made to seven people on a commission off the streets without that same training. That's my concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment for, uh, I believe it's regular agenda item number five, yes? Uh, and I, uh, first off, as we bring the discussion back here, any closing thoughts from the commission? I would personally like to express my gratitude to all those who have shared their thoughts, their testimony over the last two weeks, who have emailed, who have made phone calls and reached out to each of us individually. Uh, I've saved some of my thoughts for the end because I wanted to take an opportunity to listen to everyone. Uh, one of the things that has often repeated during the course of these last two weeks during comment is that this is a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. I'd actually push back on that. Uh, within our, within our criminal justice system, there is a problem that exists. Unfortunately, there are prosecutors who misuse the power that's been given to them. And they do commit prosecutorial misconduct. It happens. It's sad, it's unfortunate, it's wrong, it's unethical. I'm grateful that we live in a county where I don't think that occurs. And as we look at the caseload, as we look at the facts and the evidence, I think there's facts and evidence to support that, that it hasn't yet occurred here. But I'm also a person that believes in a very old adage because I believe it's true. And that's an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And so I have to, as a duly elected official, look at this issue and say, is there something we can do to make sure that a problem that does exist within the system we operate in never occurs in Utah County? And the reason I believe that is because it's essential, because all of us in the end are after the same thing. We're after justice. We're after getting the bad guys and making sure the innocent remain unconvicted. We want the same thing. There's different methods to get there. It was alluded that I'm a Republican agreeing with the ACLU. Well, of course, a broken clock's right twice a day. Okay, we can look at it up here. And I'm not saying that they're wrong, right? I, because I believe, truly, truly believe that we're after the same things here. We're after justice and to make sure the scales of justice maintain a balance. And I have to ask myself, is there something I can do in my role, uh, to help those? And that's why I'm looking at this, we're exploring it. That's why your comments, your input and your insight into the system is so critical. Because I truly believe in the American governing system. And that means that ideas and thoughts and proposals are put forward, they're debated, they're amended, they're tweaked, they're adjusted. And in the end, we vote on something that we feel is a good product to benefit the citizens. And then if we find unintended consequences, we work back through that process to make sure those are corrected. But we do our due diligence upfront to make sure that they hopefully are averted in the first place. I believe that's what this process is. We've had extensive conversations, uh, with with, uh, Jeff Buhman, and I appreciate his input and insight. Uh, and this is a debate I think is critical. And again, it's because I truly believe that unfortunately, it happens. Right? And I would again emphasize, this is in no way, shape or form an attack on our attorney's office. It comes from my perspective as a person who believes that prevention is our greatest tool. And can we do something here to continue to ensure that it doesn't happen? Now, after we go through this process, we may come to a determination that we're doing everything that's necessary and appropriate. Or we may come to a conclusion that there's a an amended version of this that will enhance our ability to protect our prosecutors, our citizens and our defenders, and most importantly, protect our criminal justice system from abuses that unfortunately, from time to time, occur. So that's, I just wanted to make that statement so that it's clear where I'm coming from on this issue, uh, and that I intend to continue to work through it. Uh, and that the, that's basically how I feel. And and most importantly, again, that we can't make good decisions without this kind of dialogue, without the debate, without the the sharing of ideas. And I appreciate your willingness to come and and share yours. Commissioner Lee, any additional thoughts?
Um, I I just look forward to the conversation and 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 let's 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 work through it. Let's let's have that conversation in which we can, we can banter it back and forth and, uh, find something. I I I I do feel, I just get a sense that we will find something, uh, whatever whatever that looks like, uh, is is part of the discussion. If it's if it morphs a little bit from what Jeff has, and I'm assuming that there's gonna be some other elements in there, I I I I feel like we'll we'll come to something that hopefully will work and and we can agree upon and 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 go forward with. Did I, um, is, was this table on consent? I can't remember how.
Uh, no, we did not.
We did not, okay, I'll make a motion that we that we table this, uh, without date, uh, so that we can go through the process. And 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 sometimes in tabling, the the fear of tabling is is that you can bring it off of a table right in a meeting. And and so, I I I'll pledge to you that I will not bring it off the table unless we've had it on the document or on the, uh, the the process before, so you can see it. So it's not, it's not a surprise. There's no surprise to it, you'll you'll know when it's coming, when and if it does come forward.
Okay, uh, given Commissioner Graves had to be excused for a personal issue, I will suspend the rules for the rest of the meeting and I will second the motion to table without date. And we'll now call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to table carries to zero. We'll now move to regular agenda item number six. This is to receive the recommendation of the top three proposals from an RFP for clinical laboratory services. Uh, I believe, Robert, do you have a comment on this one from staff? If you could just go ahead and give us your brief report on this.
Yes, uh, Robert Baxter, purchasing manager. Uh, well, you received the report, there were four respondents, uh, that we had a committee of of five uh, come together to make a make a recommendation, they gave their their top three picks, um. I don't know what else you, what else you needed to know.
Quest diagnostics was the top?
Yes, it was.
I just noticed something interesting. Your signature and Commissioner Ivy's signature looked pretty close.
I noticed that as well.
Did you?
I'm older than he is, so.
We'll have to, uh, watch that.
We'll have to watch that, for sure.
Make a motion?
All right, I'm ready.
I'll, I have, I have read down through it and looked at, I will make a motion that we go with the the suggestion number one, the the quest diagnosis as the as the selection.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and second to receive the recommendation for quest diagnostics, uh, for clinical laboratory services. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry two zero. Next up is regular agenda item number seven. This is to look at adopting or denying an ordinance amendment to Utah County land use ordinance, uh, eliminating the prohibition of kitchens in residential accessory structures. Bryce, if you could give us a report?
Sorry, I was running over, out of breath. Um, I'll just give you a quick summary of the request and then, uh, answer any questions you might have. So the current land, Utah County land use ordinance, uh, this is Bryce Armstrong, Community Development Staff. Um, the current, uh, section of the Utah County land use ordinance, uh, three dash nine, um, entitled accessory building prohibited as living quarters, states a dwelling unit or kitchen should not be permitted in any accessory building. permitted in any accessory building. The applicant would like to build an accessory structure. If I recall, it's a pool pavilion. He's got a pool, an accessory structure has a pool on his property, and would like to have a pavilion and have a kitchen, a food preparation area as part of that pavilion to accompany their activities with their pool. The current ordinance as written would not permit that. And so, his proposal has been to strike out the prohibition of the kitchen while still retaining the prohibition of a dwelling unit to be permitted, not permitted in an accessory building. And we also change building to structure to be consistent with our ordinance elsewhere. So, I know, I think he's still here after this morning's meeting, but he may have some additional information. But that's kind of the meat potatoes of this application.
I didn't have any questions for staff, Commissioner Lee.
I'm fine with this. I think this, actually, is pretty reflective of what goes on in cities already, for the most part. And so I think that it's consistent with what I see in a city application, just because you're just outside, maybe in the county, that seems a little bit different. I know that a lot of times it's probably put on there for purposes of possible fires. I'm sure that's weighed over and over, but I think that we're adequate in our policies when it comes to fire and possibly what that looks like. So I feel good about what we're doing here.
You know, the balance you try and find is to, this happens already, people want them and put them after the fact. And so, we don't want to penalize those that want to do it right, get them inspected and have them, you know, safe, but also to try and balance the enforcement issue.
I would rather have that in there, so that we can actually do the inspections on it than to have them do it after, and which it becomes illegal, but you know it happens.
Yeah. The challenge has always been kind of the enforcement. You know, it's a little, the way it's currently written, it's a little more preventative upfront than responsive. You know, it's easier to say, hey, no kitchen, but you know, it could be outweighed by some of the benefits as stated, so.
This is a legislative issue that would be applicable for public comment if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak to it. It's up to you.
Jeff Hanson. I'm the author of this massive change to strike two words. It just feels like the purpose of the existing ordinance, having an kitchen in there, is a little bit overboard. If we look at the definition of a dwelling unit, it clearly states that the facility cannot have living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. And so a kitchen in a pavilion like mine does not have a living quarters in it at all. And so, to just single out a kitchen seems a little bit ridiculous. You know, when I met with the planning commission, there was some good thoughts brought up about people that want to have just a canning kitchen in a shop or something they have. You know, and they can't do it, just because a kitchen for some reason is blacklisted. And so, to have ordinances that exist solely for the purpose of making it easier to enforce other ordinances, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I would fully agree with that. I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as stated in number seven on our regular agenda.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to adopt regular agenda item number seven as stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry two to zero. We will now move to regular agenda item number nine. This is looking at adopting an ordinance amending chapter nine, several sections of the Utah County Code relating to fire prevention and protection. We would look to staff for some report on why these changes are proposed. If there, here he is. I thought I saw you here.
Hi, Jack Snow, county fire marshal. We've been working on some problems that have found in the county fire code for some time. I've done quite a lot of back and forth trying to make them fair for everyone. One of the primary issues that I wanted to address is that we have people who own property out in the unincorporated areas of the county, and they really don't have the latitude to do much with it because there's no infrastructure, no water supply for fire suppression. And before I came along and since, for the last five years, you know, that kind of, those kinds of projects have been held up because of the lack of water supply. And I think one of the main points in these changes is to make it, give these people at least an option to have a safe level of fire protection that's standardized, something that the contracted fire departments can deal with, that's consistent. And I'm proposing that we allow the use of NFPA eleven forty-two, which is a document that talks about water supplies in areas where there are no central water systems. My problem with that, going to that in the past, has been that it is kind of problematic in that that allows maybe too many options. You know, I didn't want a situation where one area, you're going down a road and one maybe business or occupation or facility has, you know, the drafting out of a horse trough or something really odd or converting a silo to a water supply. You know, so I wanted something that there is a minimum standard that's consistent and that's safe. And that's why I was proposing eleven forty-two with those few additions to it. The email I sent the commissioners last Friday kind of outlines these issues that relate to water supply. And the last one on that list was the addition of nine twelve E, which would allow the fire department, fire marshal in very, very rare circumstances, allow some kind of exception to the rules when it's impractical to meet the strict letter of the law. My intention would be to inspect the fire codes as they are written, but I think there are occasions where we would like to have the opportunity to make some changes.
But that was the one question, part of why I held this, that I had. Could you give me an example of where that might be applicable, where there might be a rare exemption?
Okay. Let's say on a water supply, for example. We maybe have an area of the county where it's just really impossible to have any kind of a water supply. Maybe we could allow a, some kind of a water tank or a drafting source from a lake or something like that, where it would be so impractical to do something else. And if we could conclude that that meets the intentions for safety, life safety and like that, then we could have the latitude to approve it. Also, there are situations where in the urban well-lined interface area, one that came up recently, it was a construction requirement that was, became problematic to enforce strictly. And the person who had received the building permit and the fire safety permit, had come up with an alternative that we felt would work, and this would allow us to do that.
Okay, in follow-up to that, and I'm going to preface this with the fact that I'm someone who hates writing rules for every possible scenario, so I like the idea of some flexibility in there, so I like the intent of this. The question, and I'm glad Rob cut up, is there risk or opening for liability? How will we defend ourselves if there's potentially, well, you let this guy do it, why don't you let me, type of a scenario?
Well, I guess there's maybe always some of that risk. Robert, county attorney's office.
That was just my, again, I hate, that's a quandary for me.
Let me tell where this language comes from, and maybe that'll help resolve your issue. This language actually comes straight from the fire code.
Okay.
The fire code already allows for this. The difference is, our county code does not.
Okay.
And so, all we're really doing here is, this is a copy and paste from our fire code, which we've adopted the fire code, but again, we have not adopted an exception based upon our county code. So this allows that same latitude to be utilized, the fire code latitude that we want to utilize potentially in a situation that may be rare and happen. And it would allow, we had a conflict between the county code and the fire code, and it would now have it in our fire code or senior county code now, and so we'd be able to do that. I hope that I didn't confuse it more than I should have. And this thing is three things. Let me just kind of mention that. There's a state statute that was changed last year that kind of started this whole process, and that's why we've been having this back and forth. We're trying to implement that in here. So it allows for that flexibility we talked about. It does deal with fire flow and fire sprinklers. And you saw a lot of language about that. And it does incorporate another provision, which is done by state statute that does allow for additional fire sprinklers in certain rare circumstances, like a substandard road or where you don't have a centralized water system and those kind of things. And that's not that rare, actually, in the county. But it does allow for those things by state statute last year, that those things were amended. So those have all been incorporated into this.
Okay.
So, can I ask you a question, the no-what-if question? So what if somebody comes in, the current one that we have here, and, because there is some flexibility in there, and the fire marshal rightfully says, yes, we're going to grant this exception, and then a year later, somebody else comes and applies for it, and for whatever reason, I don't know, maybe there's a change in fire marshals, I mean, that rarely happens, but it's going to happen, right?
Well, this one is retiring.
Yeah, that's why I brought that up. And so the next one says, well, I have discretion in that, and I'm saying no to that one, and the individual says, well, it was granted under the same scenario last, just last year. What process do we have in place to check that? I think that's kind of along the lines of some of the thinking.
Great question, and there is a process, it's actually not utilized, it's called the Fire Code Board of Appeals. And if it was a fire code element that we're trying to modify, you could look to modify that. Like, and there may have been a case in Utah County, but it's, I've been here a long time, and Dave probably had one, maybe years and years ago. But I've actually had cases in Wasatch County where that went to the Fire Code Board of Appeals. We do have, we actually have one set up. I'm not sure if the terms are current, but we, I mean, if there was a fire code issue, we could actually, there is a appeal body.
And I don't know if that would ever happen. It's just one of those things where, if it doesn't, then all of a sudden, you're going to, we're going to wind up in a discussion.
Sure. But to help you, I mean, that should provide you some level of confidence that there is an ability for someone who's agreed by the interpretation of the fire code to go beyond that if they feel like it's necessary. You know, and the Fire Code Board of Appeals, as I recall, it's been a long time since I looked at it, but it does have specialties that are attached with those members typically, so. And they would take a look at it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that your question?
Yep. Seeing no other questions, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending chapter nine as stated and as outlined here in our, in our, on our agenda.
So I will second that. I have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance amending chapter nine of our fire code. Prevention is stated in regular agenda item number nine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry two to zero. We are now, and we went to consent, looking at our closed meetings, we can strike thirteen, we'll need twelve, fourteen, and fifteen.
I'll make a motion that we approve set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, water rights, or water shares at today's date at this location following the completion of our regular agenda.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting as stated in regular agenda item number twelve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry two to zero.
Forgot. I make a motion that we strike number thirteen.
I will second that. I have a motion and a second to strike regular agenda item thirteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries two to zero.
I'll make a motion that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical and mental health of an individual or individuals at today's date at this location following the completion of our regular agenda.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting as stated in regular agenda item number fourteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry two to zero.
I'll make a motion that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss the pending or reasonable imminent litigation at today's date at this location following the completion of our regular agenda.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting as stated in regular agenda item number fifteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry two to zero. There are no work session items submitted. Is there any general public comment?
Hello, I am Brian Voges. As you know, I work with you in the commission office. Earlier in this meeting, Utah County Prosecutor Carl Holland claimed that no action has been taken by the commission on a number of issues. I just want to take a moment to correct Mr. Holland's false statements and his false accusation that you have somehow been derelict in your duties as Utah County Commissioners. One of the issues he brought up was homelessness. Commissioner Lee, you've already addressed that, so I'll move on to the next one. He said that nothing has been done about employee wages. As all Utah County employees know, there was a three point two percent salary increase that went into effect just last month. That's more than a lot of my friends in the private sector have received this year. He talks about the opioid crisis, claiming nothing's been done on that. As you know, there's an RFP that the commission has put out to hire a law firm to sue manufacturers of opioids, and Commissioner Lee just held a press conference on that last week with Utah County's Department of Drug and Alcohol Prevention and Treatment. Mr. Holland claims that transportation issues in North and South County have been ignored. I don't know where he gets that information, that those issues are addressed all the time. I would say transportation is probably one of the top two issues that the commissioners are constantly addressing. Roads are being constructed, fixed, rights of ways are being obtained all the time. Funding is always being sought after for those important projects. He also claims there are dozens of other issues. He doesn't mention what those issues are, but I thought I would address some of the many issues that I've seen the commission tackle in recent months. There's domestic violence and bringing awareness to that. I've seen countless hours utilized by this commission into bringing attention to that important issue and looking for ways to fix that as much as possible. The commissioners oversee mental health services in the county, and I believe do so very well. They have fixed and continue to fix many of the issues associated with the recent change in our county's human resources information system. The commission is working on fixing and creating more transparency and better management as it relates to the Utah County Fair. The commissioners are working out a solution for parking for our important asset at the convention center, the Utah Valley Convention Center that the county owns. We, the commissioners are working out a solution for the Peaks Ice Arena ownership, and I believe are doing that very well. The commission has recently worked on securing funding and furniture and space for the Utah County Public Defenders Association. You have worked on reforming and fixing the process of how tourism tax revenues get spent in this county so that it's more transparent and in line with state law. Domestic, excuse me, economic development has been a huge success in Utah County, Utah. As a state, is one of the best in the country at that, and Utah County is one of the best in the state at economic development. Utah Lake Preservation and Restoration has also been worked on by this commission, representing the county very well at the legislature and to mayors and before the Utah Association of Counties and before the National Association of Counties. This commission is working out a solution on the controversies, or actually has worked out, I would say, a solution. out, I would say, a solution on the controversies involving West Mountain and mining and zoning in the West Mountain and Benjamin areas. This commission has brought awareness to some of the great nonprofits we have in our county, like Tabitha's Way, as we know that the Tabitha Ways, Tabitha's Way founders were honored last month with the Commission Medal of Honor. Commissioner Lee, I know you have done a lot of work with the Housing Authority of Utah County. The commission as a whole has worked on preserving target shooting opportunities on the west side of Utah Lake while balancing the competing interests of protecting public You oversee the Spanish Fork Fairgrounds. You oversee aging services in the county. You oversee and put together the budget every year. Your work on water issues and developing water projects and securing funding for those projects has not gone unnoticed, at least not by me. Not to mention the countless committees and boards that you both sit on and your tremendous civic engagement. I could go on and on and on about the work we've done in the commission office, but I'll stop right there. So thank you very much for letting me correct the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right. With no additional public comment, we will move into our closed meetings.